Contract stuff, I guess the first thing on the agenda to discuss is the contract for the director. No, it'd be the revision of the, in our, in our policy, we have a two-thirds majority to elect, to do any business as far as the director. Well, the attorney general's already ruled that we can be majority, which will be six votes. So, we'd like to change that back tonight since the attorney general has already ruled on it. So, when we, that's, get that little dab out of the way when we get ready. And then we want to narrow it down to two candidates, but the main concern here is to get to work on our contract. So, Mr. Wright, are you ready to talk with us about that contract? You bet it. Alrighty.
So, what we added in would really just, if you had an accusation against a director, and you were gonna present that to the board, it would define the procedure, how that's presented, and it would also set out for that director what would happen if those accusations were raised in the meeting and enough board members voted to substantiate those accusations. And so, what we added here defines sufficient proof, which was the language in the contract. It would be determined at a hearing in front of the entire board when proof shall be presented to the board in a public meeting by the accusing party and a vote taken by the board as to the sufficiency of the proof. Notice has to be provided, giving the director the nature of the allegations, the proof to be presented, and of course, the director would have a right to hire their own counsel and defend against the accusation. Really, that's sort of the law and the rules as it is. I just think it would be good to have it in the contract that, hey, if you're not doing your job, and we have people that wanna come in here, and they wanna accuse you of something, and then they get up and they provide testimony or proof that you've not done your job, then you should be on notice that if six members of this board say that's enough, then you're terminated. Now, the reason I brought you the Cumberland County contract is I, when I reviewed it, I noticed in their contract that you could be terminated with 60 days' notice. No, no cause necessarily, just pure job performance. I'm not saying you should do that or not do that. I'm just telling you, just like all the other provisions of this contract, it's just a contract. It'll say whatever you want it to say. And, you know, if it's what you say is something that's illegal, I'll tell you that. But most generally, you know, these, these terms are meant to be defined by the board, and that's up to you to do tonight. So, I'm here. If you got any questions, just go through the contract. We'll spend as much time as we need to to flesh out what you can do or you can't do, how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I guess where do we start? Does anybody have anything we wanna start on this contract as far as, of course, we'll be paying on the pay scale that the state requires us to pay on according to the number of years and all, but you all have a copy of that. So, I mean, that won't be left up. We could go above that if you wanted to, or we could stay where that is on this, on this scale. Mr. Peters, you got anything you wanna start with on this contract?
What I did today, and you all have a copy of it, from an email I got from Ben Torres out of Nashville, TSB. I had him look at 10 counties that's like size and manner of Fentress County with, with the number of schools, minus or plus one or two. But after I reviewed that, the average salary of the district that is shown here below in this little graph, uh, the average salaries for a director is $110,657. Now, when you look at, at Fentress County, uh, the superintendent's salary presently is $93,635. It does not reflect that on your chart that you handed out. It's 70, have you got yours, Sierra? 77,350. But the difference in that is, is made up with all the benefits that I think Mr. Wright talked about, the dues and the health insurance and all that. So, that's what needs to be debated, I think, here tonight. The pay scale is already pretty much established. You can change it, obviously, if you want to. But taken with the three candidates we've got, oh, after looking at it, they're all coming in about the same, minus or plus a few dollars of what the pay scale is that we've got, what our director now is making, pretty close.
Depends on the years of service.
It depends on the years of service and so forth. So, uh, but it's left up for debate from the board. I mean, it's in front of you. You can look at it, and you can add to or take away whatever you want to do tonight.
Alrighty. Ms. Sierra, you've got anything you wanna add before we go to the other side of the room here?
My question, of course, was that I didn't understand the, the salary. I thought we could set a dollar amount and even it out. So, I didn't realize that we had to follow that scale, or that, I was confused. I was confused, and I said this a minute ago, that our current director's salary is based upon that scale plus add-ons. And those add-ons aren't just bonuses and things like that. It's different other stipulations that are not, um, listed in his contract. So, I didn't understand if we just couldn't set a dollar amount instead of doing that and then adjust our, maybe adjust our pay scale or something so it makes sense.
Well, you can, as long as you don't go below the state average here, but
Right.
A lot of them, there'll be difference in, you know, the doctor's degrees and all that, of course.
Right.
That'll make them make more. But as long as you don't get under the scale, you'll be alright.
I, I agree with Eddie. I think that's a floor, what that is, a floor. Anything else you do can be over and above that, or enhance the contract. You just have a floor to work with.
And I noticed in, um, the contract that we got from another county, it stated that there's a, um, a number six. It says salary increases, and it says that the director shall receive the same percentage increase of salary as do all licensed personnel of that school system. Um, and we don't have that. It says that that's, that's the exact same increase that they, they have. So, I think that might be something we wanna look at adding in.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Jones got the same thing that the teacher's got.
Right. I just mean, so the, so the contracts
Yeah.
All the same. Does that make sense?
Yep. Yep. There is.
I wasn't saying we didn't. I'm just saying if we would put the contract.
Exactly. Whatever we set this contract at, wherever we set this, if any teachers gets raises, the director will get that same raise. Alright. Uh, with benefits, it was 90, uh, that's $93,635, and that includes a single pay insurance. Ms. Tanya, are you still with us? Come up here and explain a few things about what all those extras are that we'll put you on the spot early. I know I'll pay for this later, but. How do we handle the bonuses and how the percentage of raises he gets, just like any teacher?
Everything that the teachers get extra, he gets extra. So, when you added the 1%, 2%, he got that. He gets the salary equity, he gets differentiated pay, all of that stuff, and it just keeps adding. So, once you set it, you can't go below that scale that you got in your hand. That's state minimum. But you can go wherever you want to from there. But whatever you put, the other goes on top of that. So, your equity, like your equity that they get on the first, the 20-plus years gets like over $2,000. And the new, new beginners start at like 300, 400, or $500.
Now, if you don't care to stay with us for a minute, just stay right there, 'cause I'm sure we'll have a lot of these. Nikki, you want to have any questions for her, or for?
Am I able to add a suggestion to this at this point? Okay.
Nikki, I don't wanna interrupt you. I'm gonna stop right here and just correct something here before we take this any further, because it may change what you're about to say.
Okay.
It's my understanding that salary is paid plus benefits. So, the number that he's paid is not inclusive in the benefits, but it's
So, you think the $93,000 is plus the insurance?
That, that's, that's what the finance department's telling me, Eddie.
Ms. Tanya, you don't agree? We want you, how's it paid? You're the one that the checks come through.
Mike has been, Mike's paid his insurance for years. And so, this year, last year, I think, is when he started not paying his insurance. And so, it is, the 93 is inclusive for everything he gets.
Well, I, I think as this board will wanna furnish him a single plan insurance, I mean, as a perk. I mean, surely we're gonna do that.
A single policy only.
Right.
Well, I think the contract, I think the contract that's in effect now actually was his salary plus he gets the insurance benefit. That was the way it was supposed to be. It just
It just never had been, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, Ms. Nikki.
Well, I have two things. So, is he making $93,000 and then insurance on top of that? Or is he making 77 plus insurance on top of that? What is he paid?
The insurance is on top of that this year.
On top of which number?
The 93.
93.
Okay. Alright. So, my suggestion for the new contract, I would like to see, um, and this is up for discussion. I was just thinking about this. Um, the new, newly hired person would have a two-year contract, and at the end of two years, they're reevaluated and would possibly be back up for, um,
Renewal.
Renewal of employment, and at that time, the board could bring in other candidates that have applied.
Well, the state won't let you give anyone but a three-year contract. Now,
Okay.
If you give them a two-year, or you give them a year, say, say you're gonna give them a two-year, after the first year, you can add another year. You can never have anybody under contract for over four years, but you can't give them a four-year starting off. You can only give them three years.
Okay. Good. I wanted to make sure there was some kind of a limit.
Right, yeah.
So, it was reevaluated.
Okay. Let me make sure of one thing before we go any farther. This number I gave you came from a TSB out of Nashville today. This 93,635. Let me ask the finance director. He's got the pulse on the numbers, the exact numbers that Mike is paid. Can you tell me, Tyler, what his salary was, or is this year, please, sir? I just wanna make sure we got our numbers correct, okay? I should've called him today, and I didn't.
Yeah. Gross is 91,341,84.
Say it again, please, sir.
Now, does that include insurance or no?
I'm pretty sure the way I understood it, 'cause we ran into this through the audit a little while back, was his insurance by his contract's paid, correct? That's what it's under. But he wasn't paying. He was paying it himself. He wanted to pay it himself. He elected to pay it himself.
I know he told me this year he did pay his insurance. He paid it on his
In the past, yeah. They changed that. He, he's changed that back and forth a couple times, but I think in the contract, it was to be paid, but he was paying it. It was to pay an individual policy, is the way the contract read.
So, if we pay him 91,341,84 plus his single plan insurance, we'll be where we're at today?
That's what his contract read before. That's, according to the contract, he's got this set salary plus the benefit of a single policy.
Okay.
That's the way the contract was originally worded. Now, if he elected to pay it itself, I think that we, at one time, we let him elect to pay that, but then we got with him this last year and said, hey, Mike, your contract says we're supposed to pay for it, so let us pay for it. So, up until we got with him and said, hey, we're, we need to abide by our contract, or audit, we need to abide by our contract. We, we took over and started handling the insurance. But by contract, that was his set salary, plus he would get paid his benefit on top of that of a, of an individual policy.
Alright.
His retirement's a TCRS, same as, we don't contribute to 401K for him, do we? We contribute the same to TCRS as we do everybody.
To be treated as any other teacher's employee, yes. Thanks, sir. Alright. Melissa?
I have a couple of questions. So, I just understand, we can only offer a max of a four-year contract?
We can't, three.
Three, three, is three, okay. What's the minimum a year you said? Is that correct?
Yeah, we can give them a year or two years.
Okay.
You cannot give them an over three to start with. If you give them a three-year, and they work another year, then you can extend that another year. You can never have them under contract for over four, but you can never give them to three, but three to start out.
Okay, got you. So, that answers that question. Then my next one is specifically going back to what Evan was talking about, this sufficient proof. Do we need to put in there that we give it to him in a certain timeframe before?
That's, that's a good idea. It's up to you how you wanna, you know, if you wanna put a 30-day window in there, since, you know, you're, you're talking about a hearing where people are gonna
Because if he's gonna bring his own counsel, or whoever
Yeah. You know, you, you may want to give people a few weeks' time. You may want to give them 14. I mean, it kinda depends. Something for you guys to weigh out, depends on what the act is.
Okay.
You know, is it something that you need to
An immediate act upon.
You want to act quickly, or do you want to, um, you could build it this way. You could say that, uh, you know, that they get, you know, 14 days' notice, more upon request, you know, but it has to be made in writing, or something like that. You could, you could do something to where
And I didn't say anything about a legal act, though. Of course, you know, that's just cause. But let's say they get caught doing something that's illegal, and they're jerked.
That's just cause. You just, you know,
Okay, got it.
Bring, bring that in here, and, you know, and there are, um, I believe, perhaps it's in the other, the contract from another county, there are, um, ways to absolve yourself of liability for illegal acts. And you could also insert a contract that if they've committed an illegal act, you know, that is just cause. You could put, you could put another paragraph in there that defines it that way. I mean, that would be very, very easy and certainly perfectly legal.
And then I just wanted to add, um, something in the contract about salary increases, how it's gonna follow the same. I mean, I know it's given that we've been doing it, but I wanna set out specific. That's how we're gonna base raises are based on.
Well, the one, the copy we handed out to the state makes us go by that at least, so. And then, of course, there are years of service and all, where they've got a doctor and all that. Thank you.
Yeah.
And, and back to what you're saying about being specific, I think the insurance benefit as well, it'd probably better to be more specific about what that is, other than just all the benefits provided, you know, which that does allow, allow it to change with what you provide to other employees or what have you. But I, it's my opinion that when you put a term in a contract like that, you need to say specifically what you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause it's got the little bit of gray hazy area there.
Yeah. Gray, gray areas, really bad in the contract, so.
Alrighty, Ms. Darlene. Anything else to ask or talk about? Ms. Kathy?
The only thing is the vehicle. I know that Mr. Jones drives a vehicle. He has access to the vehicle. Um, that's never been in the contract. The vehicle was bought by, for the use of another department. That was before my time, and of course, Mr. Jones has used it as a director. Do we want to offer that with a gas card with the new director?
That's up to the board.
That, well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Alright, Ms. Bill?
No, he did not. No, ma'am.
Karen?
Drove his own.
What department was it purchased for? Do you remember?
I'm sure it's probably the shop, wouldn't it? I mean, the
Well, there was one there.
It was, uh,
Roberts had one, Rex had one.
But be that Hey, I just brought up the question.
Yeah. We'll get to that.
I mean, dog sled, but I don't know.
Lisa?
I mean, we could have a fleet of cars over there, and he could check one out if we wanna offer it to the new director.
Mr. Wright, I guess what we're hearing is that you're pretty comfortable with a lot of this. We put this salary in it.
Most of it. It needs the specifics.
We need you to put them in it, and we need to decide on this vehicle.
Well, and, and as you guys go through, I'm gonna make notes, and, uh, I've got my computer right here. We can
Well, you, you go ahead and start. What part of you want to change? I mean, according to what you've heard the board say tonight, you're the one that's gonna keep us out of trouble.
Okay.
Or get us in trouble, one of the two. If that suits everybody, I mean, anybody know any other better way to start this and let him work through it?
Take notes on it. That would be the smart thing to do. Y'all get everybody's opinion.
Where does the board stand on salary? Do we want to set a dollar amount like there is in the, uh, contract that's listed from another school system? Set an actual round dollar that you can go by? Or do you, I mean, I, I, I mean, to me, I feel like we need to take this 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and mark our numbers in and move on.
It'd be easier for our budget if we knew exactly. We had a figure.
Well, I mean, when he gets all the years, that, that, the years of service and what their degree and stuff is, then we'll know that figure.
That's what I'm saying. Do you wanna, do you wanna use that, or do you wanna set a round number like the other school system did?
Well, I'm afraid if we start using a round number, we'll get in trouble with the state. How about you, Mr. Wright?
Well, I think the way it's worded is fine, as long as, uh, the benefits are spelled out specifically, 'cause then you know what your, your state rate is.
I'm just here to do what you all at.
Well, your state rate, you know, it's like Gary was able to summon that number with just a phone call. It's public record. So, I think that language is fine, as long as we specifically put in the contract what is paid in addition to that.
Such as
Like the
Single plan insurance.
Like the insurance benefit needs to be specific, and it needs, and the things that are in addition to need to say, in addition to salary.
To furnish them the vehicle.
I can type fast.
Well, there's not a lot that we can, I guess we, well,
Would you start with number one and go?
There's not a lot we can
Term of the contract, I went on along.
There's not a lot we can do. Do you see where you want us to?
You want us to start with like term, Evan, to decide if we wanna give a, a two-year or three-year to begin with? Is that good with you, since that's the very first thing?
So, we'll, I'll just go through the relevant provisions down through here. So, the term of the contract says, uh, "The board hereby employs the director, hereby accepts employment of the director of Fentress County School Systems for the period commencing 1st day of July 2022, ending 30th day of June 2024."
Is everyone comfortable with the two-year contract?
Yes.
Yes.
'Cause we don't know what any of the three candidates we got. We don't know, we may love them right now in two years, or we may have problems. So, I mean, two years is satisfactory with everyone?
Six months, they may hate us.
You what?
Six months, they may hate us.
Yeah. That'd probably be where it'll be. Alright, we got a two-year contract term?
And I'll, and I'll go through the, those provisions that have been specifically discussed here tonight. So, paragraph four is compensation. "The board shall pay the director the annual compensation of minimum salary as mandated by the state law based upon the director's educational level and experience in 12 equal monthly installments in accordance with board policy. The board will review the director's salary annually, and the board will increase the salary of the director during the term of his contract each time an annual evaluation reflects that the director has met or exceeded the expectations of the board. In no event shall the director's salary be reduced except as provided by law. If an adjustment in salary is made during the term of this contract, all of the other provisions of this contract, including its termination date, shall remain as stated herein. The director will receive any state equity raise or bonus that is granted. Any other Fentress County teacher, the director shall be compensated pursuant to the director's experience and degree as a teacher."
Does that need any work, or does that, that covers about it?
That's, that's basically what I heard here earlier.
Yeah.
Um, insurance benefits. All benefits that may here, hereafter be provided to all other professional staff and Board of Education. I think probably just need to say
Single insurance plan paid?
Individual, yeah.
An individual's
Pay all of it? Is that
Yes.
That's, okay. I'm sure
We, we have three totally different candidates. Depending on who this is offered to, we have three totally different candidates. But if you take into the individuals that are considered, one of which a single plan makes sense for, um, two of which, in my mind, as a mother, I would think that maybe a single plan or the dollar amount of a single plan ta, paid toward, I mean,
I think if we
They might need, they might need a family plan. And so, if we're only paying a single plan, but we offer our teachers a higher payment on a family plan, then they'd be better
But we can sit here and redo this contract worrying about one that's got a family and one that doesn't.
Exactly. If, if we leave it as how we, as how we pay our teachers, then it might work better for all three of them instead of just
Then you can't set a salary.
Bearing it toward one. Does that make sense?
But then you can't set a salary, right? Because you don't know, 'cause that could
This isn't included in the salary. This is on top of.
Well, the, the insurance provision is, what she's saying is how it is now. It's worded kinda strange, but that's basically what it functions as.
I mean,
When we could change the wording to say, you know, um, "All benefits may hereafter be provided to the administrator shall be as those provided to other professional staff and Board of Education."
I think it's a massive benefit having a single plan given to you. My options on insurance are do you want it or do you not? You know, so that's quite a bit of monetary influence there with, uh, having a single plan. And if you choose to add your family, then add the teachers.
And we've got 175 teachers that don't get that option as a full-paid plan. I think a full-paid single is enough. I don't want, I don't feel like we should option that out there for
What are you gonna do if they need a family plan?
Let them pay the difference.
They can buy it.
Let them pay the difference.
They pay the difference.
Just like, they'd be on the same plan as the rest
Like Steve and the, the office staff.
The garbage, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm just saying, if, if, if we're paying a single plan, say it's $600, but we're paying
Right.
A single plan for that person, and that's paying it in full, but on a family plan, we would be paying 900. We need to fix the garbage to where it allows
No boundaries.
Well, we'll pay a single or
They can pick those up and
That's all I'm saying. It's not picking on that.
Yeah, that, that sentence I can
The unit
I didn't understand
Fix the garbage, champ, on.
I got you now.
So, the health insurance benefit that you guys want, are gonna vote on will be to pay 100% of a single plan.
Right. With them having the opportunity to buy the rest of the family if they want a family plan. I know with our director now, you told me earlier that, uh, I think Tanya told me that Mike bought his and Judy bought hers. They're on two different plans, right? Judy pays her, I know, and he pays his, is what Tanya told me. Am I correct, Tanya? Where are you?
I'm playing my own.
She hide?
Yeah.
Who's hiding?
I promise I won't pick on you no more.
She's listening, trying to give you.
Oh, okay.
Alright, 100% the cost of health insurance per single person with the option to
We're giving him this to me to do some typing work there. His shorthand may be a little slow. That's fine. That's why we're here to discuss, get this straightened out. Mr. Wright, when you get it, before you go, the next you let us know. Don't all let Darlene entertain us for a little bit. You hear me, Darlene?
Yep.
Anybody got anything else they need?
As calm as a carrot tonight, you best leave me be. But we can talk about numerous things if you want to.
I know that, I know that that'd haunt me when you Well, good. Hand that out and explain that to everyone.
While you're doing that
I hope you eat cheap.
While you're doing that, I'm gonna read this back to you. "The board will provide 100% of the cost of health insurance premium for a single person with the option to receive the benefit of family health insurance provided to other professional staff. Additional premium expenses shall be paid by the director. This benefit shall be in addition to the salary."
Thank you, sir. That works.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Wright needs a copy of this, too, if you don't care.
Thank you.
She's handed you out a paper that'll explain what that money difference is and I know what the local is. What's the ADM, Tanya? Okay. So, they pay that?
If you don't care, mark through that SSN number on this piece of paper. Just hand it out to you, please.
If what?
Mark through that SSN number on top, please.
Oh. You remember we can't use that for needed? Alrighty. That'll explain the money numbers there. The difference in them. The difference in them. The membership dues now. I think we ought to offer them the best, you know, to you. The premier, that's the best single plan. Am I correct? All right, might order make notes in there.
Should we, uh, we need to be using our mics by the way, the radio station's mentioning that.
Do we want to fix that to where it reads that we're offering the premier single plan?
I think that's a good idea.
Since there's three options.
Put the, put the max on it.
Yeah.
That you're going to offer.
Okay.
Call it premier.
Yes.
All right.
Now you can go on to membership dues, sorry.
All right. Mr. Wright, you want to discuss anything about the membership dues in this?
Um, well.
Or you not, you?
Let me just read, let me just read through that and then I'll talk to you a little bit. There was, the director shall be responsible for the payment of all dues in any professional societies, associations, or civic clubs of which the director is a member, including but not limited to AASA, TOSS, and the Chamber of Commerce. The board shall reimburse the director for expenses in attending educational meetings or seminars, provided however that the board must first approve membership except for those organizations listed by name in this paragraph.
That's a must. They need to be involved. We should want our director to be involved in all those.
Do we pay those dues now?
Yes.
You, in, in his contract, and I've removed it from this contract, there was a specific provision with a specific amount for his membership dues that was negotiated beforehand. Of course, we can, I, we don't know exactly what those membership dues are going to be, but they were in the hundreds of dollars on Mike's last contract. They weren't, you know, like five thousand dollars or something.
And I like the words you put in there with board after they talked to the board about it, so that's good.
Well, uh, we don't, uh, in this contract provision, and this was in the contract that, that we're under now, it says the director shall be responsible, but then there was another paragraph that says that we were responsible for a specific amount. And you can change this and, uh, you know, say that you're going to pay the dues. I, I don't know if that's what you were getting at, Ms. Brandon, or not, uh, that we should pay the dues and I, I don't know, I don't think we're going to know what a specific dollar amount's going to be in twenty twenty-two.
But that's what I'm saying, in the second part of that, it specified that we was going to pay.
In, in, in Mike's contract it did, but I'm not, you don't have to do that. I mean, you could say you're going to pay the dues. The dues are, are small amounts considering how much money you're talking about here.
Do y'all pay the dues?
Yes, please.
In the old contract, it said the Fentress County, it's amendments on, in, I don't remember, twenty-two amendments, A, says the Fentress County School, School System will pay the top yearly dues approximately eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars for director of school. That was eight hundred and sixty-nine.
Do we need to put it as?
We don't want to set a dollar amount, we just want to say that we will pay the dues because I'm sure everything's changed.
Well, that's what I was going to say, do we want to put a cap amount like a, up to twelve hundred dollars or up to fifteen hundred dollars or?
You could, you could say up to a certain amount.
Amount. That way it covers for the increase throughout the timeframe.
Is everyone comfortable with twelve hundred?
And I think that, I think that's fine from a legal perspective because they know that they're going to have to, um, have these memberships because the contract requires them to have these memberships and they're going to have this amount of money to apply towards that. Um, now, if they come back and, and, you know, disagree with this provision of, of course, that's something you can take up another meeting, but.
All right, I think what we're hearing then we're going to provide up to twelve hundred dollars for membership dues. All right, number seven, professional liability. It probably would need to be per year, wouldn't it, Mr. Wright?
You just made it easy to get that last one together.
But that's what I'm saying, it probably needs to say per year because if we give two-year contract, you know, it's going to be twelve, twenty-four hundred.
I need to read it back to you, so give me just a moment. The number was twelve hundred, is that what everybody was comfortable?
Right, per year.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, when you speak, would you please pull close to your microphone, make sure it is on? We are live streaming and we're getting a whole lot of comments saying, I can't hear this one, I can't hear that. So just kind of pull into your mic and make sure it's on and everyone will thank you.
Most of us don't want them to hear us. We're shy. Shy, yeah.
What questions, um, do the board members have about the professional liability?
That's what I'm starting to say, we was just waiting on you to get to that.
No, I, I think, I think that's, that's how it needs to read.
That's how it should read.
Right there, I mean, it, it.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
All righty, how about number eight, professional liability?
And, and before we go on to the next one, somebody mentioned illegal acts in there earlier. The board is contractually bound to defend the director except, uh, one of the exceptions to that is if they commit an illegal act, so, um. I think number eight, self-explanatory.
Yep.
Um, similarly, the work year, I don't imagine that's going to change for the new director.
Well, it probably wouldn't hurt to read it out though so that people know what work to discuss.
Uh, the work year, the work year shall consist of two-hundred-and-forty duty days. The director shall be entitled to one day of vacation for each month served as the director of the school system. Vacation days may not be accumulated beyond one, beyond one year, but may be accumulated within one work year. Does that, everybody understand what that's saying?
Mm-hmm. You good, we're good with that, right? Number nine?
Sick leave. The director shall be granted one day of sick leave for each month on contractual employment. Sick leave days shall be cumulative and unused sick leave days may be used for retirement credit in accordance with the policies of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System.
That's good.
Everybody good with that? Number eleven?
Expenses. The board shall reimburse the director for all actual and necessary travel and other expenses required in the performance of the official duties during employment under this contract, subject to such limitations as provided by law and by board policy.
So how does the state handle that as far as mileage and stuff like that? Is there a policy by the state that they pay a certain amount of this expenditure? Or do we have something in our policy?
Well, I think we have policies of our own about how we pay travel expenses, but most people pay travel expenses according to.
According to, close to state reg.
Yeah, just the.
Mr. Brandon brought up a point about the truck and that's where that would come into play at because you wouldn't, if we're going to provide them a truck to drive or a vehicle to drive around the county or to cook or Nashville, then we wouldn't necessarily need to pay them travel expense in addition to that. So that's a good point, Ms. Brandon.
There are also the vans.
There's the van, yeah. So I think something needs to be put in there to them.
I think our policies probably handles the way the vans and things are used because they're along to board members to go to these fall district meetings and stuff like that. But I don't know that we want to furnish a vehicle. I mean, that's just a bigger liability to the county. I mean, how, I don't know how the rest of you feel, of course, I guess better get up here closer. But I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that, what do y'all think about furnishing the vehicle? Because I mean, if we hire one, some of these might not want to drive an old pickup truck around.
Well, the truck could be added to the fleet and if anybody needed it, whatever department they're in, they could check it out like they do a van. You know, a couple of teachers might rather drive a pickup truck is to go somewhere in a van.
And they have stuff to haul for?
There you go, from classroom to another school.
From classroom equipment.
So it's not like.
That probably needs to come back to the board of education and be treated like the vans are treated, wouldn't you think?
Well, in that case, I think you could leave the paragraph as it's written because it's.
I do too.
There's nothing in the contract about providing a vehicle, you know.
What about mileage would be my question. Karen made a good point after, I mean, there, nobody's picking on anything that's happened in the past, just stating facts. There is a vehicle that is provided now that is being used, but in the future, if we're not providing a vehicle, but if someone is going to check the roads or going to, around to the different schools as they should be, then how are we, do we need to put in that we're going to pay mileage and that the base point of mileage would be from central office? Or to each school or, or that would be an expense I think we might want to put in because obviously we're expecting them to drive to the different schools.
If I were doing this job, this is just me, I'm one of ten. If I were doing the job, there's certain things that I'm obligated to do. Anything within the boundaries of Fentress County, that's my job. Now, if I need to go to Nashville or if I need to go to Kentucky for a conference, then I would appreciate the board paying me mileage. And if I didn't want to put the miles on the old vehicle I'm driving, then I would check out the van or the pickup and go in it. But anything that's done within the boundaries of Fentress County, that's just part of your job.
And also, you talk about, the issue here is a lot about snow days and stuff. The director should have someone in each district that provides them with weather, I mean.
Well, you've got two school board members in every one.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Mike and him, Mr. Jones and them always had somebody, you know, that beneath the end of the county or let him know how the road situation was and I, I think that's the way, we, we don't need to change that, I don't think.
Are you going to get out at four o'clock in the morning on a snowy day and call the director and say, hey, my road's slick?
If, if I needed to, I would. But I thought we just, um, most of the time, do we not ask the sheriff's department and the highway department of?
And, and your school bus drivers, the people that get out at that time to start their bus.
I mean, I assume that's how it was doing already, I may be wrong in that assumption.
That's how they.
I just assumed that, you know, he's taking it from the police officers, the call-ins are getting, we've had wrecks on this road or the bus driver saying my road's this way or, you know, teachers are saying this or that. I didn't.
Yep.
Realize he was getting out at four AM checking roads.
He probably does his, but not in the south, north end. All righty, we're comfortable with that and then and putting the, the pickup back in the county supply and go from there. Pay mileage just like everybody at the state does. All right, uh, Mr. Wright, how about number twelve?
Medical examination. Upon the request of the board, the director hereby agrees to submit to a comprehensive medical examination of physician's statement certifying to the physical and mental competency or incompetency of the director shall be filed with the chairman of the board. Cost of said medical examination shall be borne by the board.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Is that one time or yearly?
Does not say.
Does not say.
Upon, upon request, I assume that just means that they have to, one has to be demanded. And I, that's probably how it should be. I mean, we don't need to run our school board director without any reason to, to get the mental health evaluation. That might be a little bit off.
Some of the Southers will kick in for that.
But, but I mean, you know, you, 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 I mean, it's not a unreasonable thing to put in someone's contract who makes that kind of salary.
Yeah. So are you comfortable with the way it's written there?
No, I think it's fine.
All right, number thirteen?
Renewal of employment contract, this is an important provision here for, for the discussion that was had earlier. The board may extend the term of this contract anytime with concurrence of the director. However, unless the board acts on or before the first day of April, and I changed the dates to reflect the, the dates that we would be discussing in this contract, it's April twenty twenty-four or three months before the expiration date of the contract to extend, uh, expiration date of the contract to extend the contract. Such failure to act shall serve as notice to the director that the board does not intend to renew the contract. I think that could probably be a little bit clearer. So, um, you know, you guys were discussing that earlier, so I'll just sort of toss it back out there now if you, if you want to add an option to extend it, um.
You know, the board has the option to extend the term of the superintendent, but the superintendent has the option to refuse.
That's right.
Does that need to be?
No, I, I mean, they're always going to have the.
Right.
Any agreement like that has to be mutual, obviously, so they're going to have the option to refuse it. Um, I, I just think that could be, I'm not sure what is, there's not anything wrong with what it says, just kind of how it's said.
I, I think simply, you know, unless the board acts, uh, three months before the expiration date, you know, it doesn't have to.
I mean, it has to be within that three-month window.
Right.
Does it need to say anything that if we choose not to extend the contract, that it's back up for they can reapply and we can bring in other candidates or is that just a given?
If he's not extended in that three-month period, I mean, that's pretty well, contract's up. Everybody comfortable with that? All right, number fourteen?
Let me, let me back up.
Are you was going to change something?
Yeah, we're going, I'm going to, I'm going to clean that paragraph up a little bit and just say after the first sentence, um, however, unless the board acts on or before the three months before the expiration date of the contract, such failure to act shall serve as notice to the director that the board does not intend to renew the contract, so.
On or before, we cannot, we can't, before the three-month period, can we? I don't think we can extend it. It, it has to be within that three-month window, doesn't it? Am I wrong?
We have to extend it before that three-month window because once it gets to that, then, then they're non-renewed.
Okay.
Yes.
Has to be before that.
So it has to be before that, I had it wrong. All right, you got that like you wanted?
Uh, fourteen's a summative duties, which just gives basically the start date, which would be July first, twenty twenty-two as of right now. Uh, fifteen, performance evaluation annually, but no later than the first day of June each calendar year. During the term of this contract, the board of education shall review with the director, the director's performance as director of Fentress County School District, director's progress toward goals established by the board of education and the director. The prior contract had some, had some issues. The goals established by the board of education and the director, I don't know if the director really established. Uh, the working relationship of the director with the board of education, staff, students, and the community at large, and any other matters relative to the employment of the director. Um, also, we have a policy on that, that the board is to do a annual performance evaluation of the director's schools, so certainly that provision in the contract reflects the policy that we already have on the books and I, you know, encourage the board to, you know, do whatever they feel like is necessary, but we're about to start a new era here, so it might be good to have an annual review, might help to, uh, get, you know, some ideas and suggestions out on the table too, so.
Also, before we go any further, I misled y'all. It's not within the three-month, it's prior to the three-month window. I was wrong, so I just want to make everybody aware that what I said a while ago wasn't right.
Got you.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Wright.
Referrals to the director. The board of education collectively or individually shall promptly refer to the directors. All criticisms, complaints, and suggestions called to their attention relative to director or the school district for the director's study and recommendation.
Does that need board?
I mean, that's, that's definitely a discretionary function of the board there. If you like it, I like it.
All righty. Everybody comfortable?
Yeah.
All right, seventeen?
Loyalty. The director shall devote full-time attention, knowledge, and skills solely and exclusively to the business and interest of the board of education and the school district. The district may, however, undertake consulting work, speaking engagements, writing, lecturing, or other activities which do not interfere with the discharge of the director's duties and responsibilities thereunder. The determination of the board of education as to whether such work interferes with the discharge of the director's duties and responsibilities thereunder shall be conclusive.
You good with that?
I think it's fine. I think, uh, you know, from a legal perspective, there's absolutely nothing, nothing wrong with requiring your executive person to devote their primary interest to, to you.
All right, eighteen's fine. How about nineteen?
Uh, disability. In the event that the director shall be unable to perform obligations thereunder, uh, the forty days or longer due to mental or physical illness or incapacity, the board at its option may terminate this agreement and shall, and thereby shall be released from all further obligations contained thereunder. And I think that would reach back to your, uh, mental competency evaluation as well.
Well, nothing needs to be added.
You know, if something unfortunate were to happen, you'd need that as a way to rescind the contract.
We skipped eighteen. Was that what you were going to say?
Well, Eddie had mentioned eighteen, we, we can go back to it. It just says any other contract superseded, so, um, this would probably be more, so if you're Mike, you've already had a contract, then you sign a new contract, you'd want a provision in there that says we don't have it, uh, the old contract doesn't matter anymore, Then you sign a new contract, you'd want a provision in there that says we don't have it, uh, the old contract doesn't matter anymore, only the new contract matters. I mean, this could stay or go. It's not gonna make much difference now because whoever you, uh, whoever you choose is gonna be new and it's gonna be their first contract they get.
Righty.
Number twenty. Contract termination. Mutual agreement. The employment contract may be terminated by mutual agreement of the parties, retirement, disability, or death of the director. Um. This is the portion I was speaking about earlier. And we can expand this. Alter it, whatever you think. For cause, this employment contract may be terminated by the board for cause upon sufficient proof of improper conduct. Inefficient service or neglect of duty. If the board terminates this contract for cause, the director would be entitled to no further benefits or compensation. Um. Below that, in subsection I, sufficient proof shall be determined after a. Hearing before the entire board when proof shall be presented to the board in a public meeting by the accusing party and a vote taken by the board as to the sufficiency. A notice shall be provided with the nature of the allegations, the proof to be presented, and the director's right to independent counsel.
On the improper conduct, is that where we need to add in the illegal acts and do we need to make a provision that says? Even if they're just arrested for an illegal act, they don't have to be proven guilty or should we wait?
I, what I would do is, I mean, if somebody's been convicted of an illegal act.
Most definitely.
That's, that's one thing. Um, but really. In either case, that could be sufficient proof. So if I've been convicted of an illegal act. And one of the board members says, okay. Our director of schools has been convicted of an illegal act. I've got a certified copy of that. Conviction right here from the clerk's office. Then I think that's sufficient proof. You give them notice, say, we're gonna present this to the board in such and such special called meeting. You'll be able to come in and defend yourself. Not sure how you defend yourself against a. Judge order, but, you know, but what I'm saying is what you have here gives you all the ammunition you would need. To, you know, if you want to add something in there about, well, if it's an illegal act, it'll be considered sufficient proof.
I was thinking of something like arrest for a DUI or illegal drug possession because those can go to court and you get, you know, first offense.
Also, um. You, 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 what, what I would caution you against is having an automatic out. Like I, you want to have, because of the due process requirements here, you want to have an opportunity to be heard now. If you get arrested for a DUI. And then for some reason that just gets dismissed, that doesn't mean that the board can't come in here and present that.
Okay.
You could have. Proof, you could have hearing, you could have people discuss what happened. Um, it may very well be something you want to terminate somebody for, or may not. They may come in here, they may, they may come in here and say, look, I was texting on my phone. You know, they drew my blood, it come back, just nothing in it, and it was dismissed. I mean, I, I, what I would caution you against is. Backing yourself into a corner and, and where you have no flexibility whatsoever. This way, no matter what happens, whether it's illegal or improper or just simply poor performance. Then you have an opportunity to give them notice. Um, there was some mention earlier about putting a timeline on that.
Yes.
I think that's fine. Just tell me what you want the timeline to be.
Um, also, so would illegal, illegal acts be just really considered improper conduct?
Pardon that, we couldn't hear you.
Would illegal acts such as the DUI or whatever be really construed under the improper acts? I mean, because it is considered improper.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I didn't, I didn't understand your question, but absolutely, if, you know, if you. Obviously, if you're getting arrested.
We have a policy, though, that if someone is, uh. If there is a question or a dirty drug screen. Or something along that line, that person, that teacher, that employee, has the right to seek treatment.
Yeah, you, you can't, if you, uh.
Does that apply to a superintendent?
Like he said, one strike and you're gone, we're back here in a corner.
If you're, if you have tenure, then, then that affects. Your situation some. However, if you sign this contract.
That would be the key load on that.
I mean, you're subject to some different provisions than just the teachers are. You're su, you're subject to. You know, you don't show up for work. But two or three days a week, somebody comes in here and brings that before the board members and six board members vote that's improper conduct. There's not a, you know, a good reason for it, then you could be terminated, so.
The fact that the signage of the contract over.
I think, I think the sign, the sign, you know, there are some basic things that apply to everybody. And then, you know, you can get specific. Like.
Because this is our leader, you're special.
These membership dues and things like that. I mean, you know, you can, you can.
Absolutely.
So, uh, certainly, certainly it's up to you all.
What, what are your recommendations to put in there?
I think, I think a hearing within thirty days or something like that, uh, no more, no less than fourteen days, no more than thirty days because they're, you know, we were talking about the give and take between. Um, you know, giving somebody notice and time to. You know, talk to legal counsel. Requesting writing, maybe extension or something like that, but you also, if you have improper conduct, you may not want that person being able to work for the next six months while they get their case together, too, so.
But I like the idea of, uh, fourteen days, you should be able to have a committee forum that would check into the accusations. Everybody needs to be heard, and I think that would be, that should give anybody sufficient time.
And you have to be careful just because they've been arrested, like he says, if you, that could be dropped very easily.
Sure.
And then we, we paint ourselves in the corner there. We wanna, we don't want to jump the gun too quick. Because then you know you've got lawsuit trouble.
I like the fourteen days of sufficient proof and then more upon request, like you had mentioned earlier. I like that wording.
Everybody, everybody okay with adding that in there?
No more than thirty.
That a hearing, a hearing will no less than fourteen days. Of course, the chairman would have discretion over what day you can set it on. And then.
Because there's been times when our courts, because of COVID. Have not been, they've had to push dates back. So we may have to push dates back.
Well, maybe we might want to set that at thirty instead of fourteen because. Lot of us, you can't get, you know, we have to advertise this stuff that. What, so many days ahead of time, we might not get together in fourteen.
There's so many variables, too. I mean, you know, depending on what the circumstances are, there may be, you know, information. Um, you know, that there may be an investigation going on or something like that, um, just saying no less than fourteen days can be, um. Extended with a request and writing.
There you go.
Alright. Everybody comfortable with that?
What about adding without cause statement? Do we want to add that? Did everybody see that in the one from the other school system? The without cause statement. Option to terminate without cause with sixty days written notice.
What page was that on, Sierra?
Page four of the other contract, it says without cause. The board may terminate this contract without cause as its option provided that the board provides the director sixty days written notice. Of such termination. In the event the board elects to terminate this contract without cause, the board shall pay unto the director all salary due to the director. From the date of termination until the expiration date of the contract, the payment provided. For herein shall, at the option of the board, uh, be made in either monthly payments or in a lump sum payment. Upon payment as provided for herein, board shall have no further liability to director for any payments whatsoever.
But if you're gonna pay him his contract on that, I mean, if we decide we want to get rid of someone next week. And we're gonna continue to pay them the length of their contract, I mean, they don't have nothing to come back a dusty on anyway. But you're saying after the sixty days, that's where it ends.
This is just saying that you're giving them written notice of sixty days to pay them. To buy them out.
Because we can fire anybody. Yeah.
Or do we want to provide thirty days notice or? Do we just want them to be able to go home that night?
I don't think we should do without cause.
Anybody else, what you think about, should we fire someone without cause? Mr. Rattrick, what's your recommendation? You're the one that, wanting us to look at that.
This is discretionary function of the board here. If you, you know, if you guys want that in there, you can put it in there. It's, there's no, there's nothing illegal about it, let me just say that.
And it would have to be on a six to ten or unanimous vote. So we could always put that provision in there. We have to have a unanimous vote for that or whichever.
I mean, it takes six votes to do anything. I mean, any action we take has to have six votes.
I do think we need to add in there, though, that if they decide they want to terminate the position and resign before their contract's up. We have a, uh, specific amount of time that they have to give us a notice because I didn't see that.
I think it's, what, sixty days?
Yeah. But we could do ninety days or even thirty days, you know, depending on what we wanted to do, what we wanted to do with that, but we need to put in there.
Mr. Rattrick, what's your recommendation on the date limit?
I mean, I think, I think it's. Whatever the board, the will of the board is on that. I mean, you know, um, obviously people, you can't make somebody work. However, they can be in breach of contract if they don't work, so.
Well, it takes time.
Thirty days or sixty?
The rest of it is covered with the, the reasons for dismissal. I just don't think that we need a clause there that says without a cause. I mean, you know, I get up making a good move today, I, you know, I'm gonna fire Sierra.
Yeah, but it takes six votes. I mean, if. There may not be a legal cause, but there could still be. Reasonings within the board that six people would vote to get rid of somebody.
I think we've already had that experience. We just need to know if we went on thirty days or sixty or whatever.
Well, the sixty is for them when they decided like, you know what, life event happens, they decided this is not working for them. You know, I don't like it here, I don't like any of you all, or whatever the case may be. Better opportunity comes down the road somewhere else. You know, they should be able to give us, you know, a certain amount of time that they're gonna terminate it. And it takes a long time for us to come to conclusions for a new board, uh, or superintendent, so sixty days at minimum, I think ninety days at max. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, this has been a five week process.
If they decide they want to.
That's, that's totally different, though. We're talking about without cause. Us dismissing them, not them dismissing us, us dismissing them.
Yeah, let's, let's make sure we talk about one thing at a time.
Yeah, because that's different than you're saying.
We'll put them in there. If you want, if you want a notice requirement from your new director. I think you put that under the mutual agreement part of the contract termination. Uh, that they required.
And I think that needs to be ninety days, like she said, because it takes us a while to get this, a new director rolling.
When I, when I look at E under Cumberland County, it says without cause. With cause. Pretty much covers anything they could do. I'd, the only reason I could think why they would even put without cause in there. And I'm gonna use this term is for political reasons. Somebody just doesn't like you. Or they want somebody else to sit in your seat. So in sixty days, they can get rid of you.
The only thing I could differentiate the two would be just poor performance, like.
But you've got that under cause. This says without cause.
You could, of course, is poor performance improper conduct, you know, I mean, the, I, I. I mean, I think that, uh, well, I think it's a discretion of the board on this one. I mean, it's nothing illegal about it, um.
But I'd sort of feel like an axe was hanging over my head if I knew. That the board could, I know there's a sunshine law, don't talk to six people at one time, but.
That was the one thing in this contract I noticed immediately when I looked at it.
Yeah. They can get rid of you if they want.
Um, we'll get back to that in just a minute.
Well, I just had a comment with the, with the cause, too. Um, we came across that as previously noted. Earlier in the year through some stuff and we didn't have. Evidence was submitted, we didn't have cause enough. So with the cause, without cause clause in there, that would.
We didn't have an investigation.
Pretty much eliminate that, but either way, we still have to have six board members that would agree to, we want this person gone. Like she said, there may just be nothing that's with cause, but. We as a board may decide, you know what, you really ain't living up to the expectations we thought we were gonna get from you, or you said you were gonna give to us. Or this has went totally different than what we anticipated or wanted. So, I mean, I'm okay with either way, but it is something we should think about. Because there is a viable reason to have it in there, just like there's a viable reason not to have it in there.
The performance evaluation, or the performance, if they're not performing, though, that could go under their annual evaluation, too, and that. When we can decide not to renew. I mean, I.
I, I just.
I, I don't.
There may be, there may be somebody that disagree with my assessment of this, but this without cause here, without, doesn't say anything about. Doesn't say anything in here about notice either, which I think is a problem, that provision of the contract, to be honest with you, but I didn't write it. Rob, how do you determine the cause? You're not gonna give them any notice, you're just gonna show up in a meeting and vote? I don't think you can do that.
I, I.
And he, if, no matter, no matter who you pick, that person has a vested interest in their paycheck at this, once they sign this contract. And they have to have some kind of notice you're gonna take away from them. You know, so in my mind, I don't, I mean, I, I, I get it that what they're trying to do. I'm not sure that it accomplishes anything that the other provision in our contract doesn't already.
Well, see, if anybody knows about that, I, I can sort of speak to that. Having had somebody go to the State Department for a meeting and. Come home without the keys to the school. So.
That's a rude awakening, isn't it? That's a rude awakening to be.
That's a very rude awakening. That's a very rude awakening.
I, I would just prefer in the contract, um, that that not happen. And in any, in any case, that if you guys are gonna terminate the contract. And I'm not talking about letting expire, but if you're gonna terminate the contract, there needs to be notice and hearing. I think that's just the safest way from a legal standpoint. In any regard to do it.
Well, it's probably time to get you tell us for about ten minutes, get tapped in there.
Everybody okay with leaving without cause out?
I'm okay with that. I like, I do like the letter E, though, if, if they want to, um.
The transfer.
Resign, you know, their position. I like that.
Do y'all want that to be a sixty day notice or not?
I'm sorry, letter F, not letter E.
We just went over E and we're not gonna do it.
Not E, F, if they want to resign, I do like that, but maybe make it ninety days instead of sixty days.
So you're saying you'd like that to be ninety days? That give us more time to appoint someone?
Yeah, I mean, this has been a long process.
But if they're not doing a good job, of course, that falls back on some of this other stuff, too, so.
It still takes us ninety days to get a, somebody like you, probably, so it gives us time they have to stay in their contract until then to.
And a lot of the stuff we're setting, you're talking about, the three candidates we've got, a lot of this won't affect them because they.
You just never know.
They seem to be. You know, on top of their game and wanting to do good for their, their field they're in, but. Who knows, that's something might be need to be in other neck.
You could name an interim director. You know, you wouldn't have to necessarily name a new director the day that someone else leaves.
Where I think that, that we should leave out the without cause and on F. Of the one from the Cumberland County thing, Nikki. That says where, uh, the director gives the board sixty days. That's where I think it should be ninety, right?
I agree. Yes, I agree.
Y'all good, agree with that?
Yes.
Which, which paragraph are you in?
It's in F from the. Cumberland County.
On page five of the Cumberland County.
Hey, y'all, we're almost done. Good job.
Did what?
We're almost done.
How much notice are you at now? Ninety days?
Ninety days. And what was, was it with cause or without?
Without.
Without. Is that what we're, I mean, no, I'm talking.
No, 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 no.
You're still back on the other.
What you're talking about is a scenario where the.
I know that, but did we ever decide where we was gonna do it with cause on the other one or without?
We're talking about some different.
We're leaving that out altogether.
We're not terminating without cause.
Right.
Alright. I just wanted to make sure I had something on my paper.
I'm gonna read it back to you. Give me just a second. I assume that you all would want to add in there that they receive no severance pay if they quit.
True.
Okay. So what I did. So we already had a paragraph that kind of spoke to that already. So I added it to the contract termination provision up and under mutual agreement. Says, if the director shall request termination, the board shall receive no less than ninety days' notice of the intent to terminate the contract. In the event of such termination, the director shall receive no severance pay and shall be entitled. Uh, to the salary and benefits unpaid through the effective date of the termination of retirement. So you get paid through the date you leave. And nothing else.
Moving on.
Alright, um. Yeah, well, we've got a couple more.
We've got D, we got C and D.
C and D.
C, removal from office. This contract shall be terminated if the State Board of Education, in accordance with the provision of Title Forty-nine, Chapter One. Tennessee Code Annotated as enacted or thereafter amended orders the removal of the director. If such removal is ordered, the director shall be entitled to no further benefits or compensation under the terms of the contract. Transfer. The board reserves the right to transfer the director to any professional or non-professional position, position within the system. However, the compensation. However, the compensation and insurance benefits included within this agreement shall remain in full force and effect for the duration of the contract as specified in Article one. In the event the director declines to accept the transfer, this contract shall be terminated, and the director would be entitled to no further benefits or compensation.
Everything all right in that one?
From a legal perspective, it is.
It's fine with me, I mean, it doesn't, uh... I don't really see a need for it, but...
We've been through that through the years, so...
Nepotism, I think, um, this is something, an important part of the contract. The director shall not employ a spouse or child in any professional or non-professional position within the school system without the approval of the Board of Education.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two is just a, an entire agreement, a clause that says that there's, uh, basically no oral promises, there's no alter, other agreements out there, that whatever's in this paper is the agreement as it stands.
Now, do you see anything else, anyone, that needs to be changed in the contract?
Good.
Mr. Wright, do you see anything else that needs to be worked over in that?
Not from a legal perspective, I think you guys cleaned up parts that were a little vague in the prior contract.
Y'all want to take a five-minute break before we start the meeting, or...
Okay, I think we're on. Do we need to put a dollar amount?
Well, I mean, he'll, it'll be on the, the state salary schedule, is that what we decided?
Right.
Ninety-one thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-four cents, plus the insurance is what I had wrote down.
That's, that's, that's what, so it's, it's state law in the contract, so you'll be able to go to the number.
Because of her, if one of them's got a doctorate degree and the other don't, that'll change a little bit.
Okay.
But just go with this state schedule, I think will be, that'll keep us out of trouble.
Well, the state schedule that I have shows seventy-seven, three fifty is...
Yeah, but we handed you a paper, she just brought you a paper that shows what part of the county and some more stuff may come up to ninety-one, there's on the right-hand side of that paper.
That's what I wanted to know, not that we're signing them for seventy-seven thousand, that we're, he's, they're coming in, okay.
And the years of service and everything will change some of that. All right, we'll take about a five-minute break, and then we'll get our meeting done. All righty, the meeting will come to order. Uh, this is a special call meeting tonight to discuss three things, and that's all that we can really discuss, that's the contract, and the, uh, narrow it down to two candidates, but the, first of all, we'll get started, we'll get a roll call.
Nikki Voels.
Here.
Darlene Brannan.
Present.
Kathy Williams.
Present.
Gary Peters.
Present.
Ciara Koger.
Here.
Melissa Branstadter.
Present.
Karen Cooper.
Felicia Garrett.
Here.
William Cody.
Here.
Eddie Cook.
Here.
All righty, you have the, of course, there's no director's report, because it was a special call meeting. I guess the first thing we need to consider is the, uh, to revise the policy on our, from two-thirds vote, back to a six votes, the majority to pass the... I'll entertain that motion, because the Attorney General has already ruled on that. I'll second. All right, I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? The six votes.
All we...
That's the policy that we lived with all along, so...
Major, majority.
And Attorney General says it was legal, so...
Can we make that same majority instead of six? That way, if they rezone, there may be more, so just need the same majority.
So to clarify, the board will, board will attempt to select a director by a six-vote majority? Is that how you want to leave that?
You want to, uh, the board will revise the policy five point one-two-one, paragraph four, that requires a two-thirds vote to require a simple majority.
Okay.
All righty, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is the, uh, the contract that we discussed in the work session.
I make a motion that we accept the revisions with the contract we have just, uh...
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion over the contract? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Motion carries. Now, you've been handed out ballots, uh, with two, uh, with the three candidates on it. Each of you need to write down the top two candidates that you've decided on, and you need to sign it, and then our attorney and our minister lady will, will, uh, add those up, and each person will be told, it's not nothing, we have to be open to the public, so however you vote's going to be announced right here by our attorney, so if you'll write those two candidates down now and pass them up, well, we'll sit and narrow this thing down to two candidates for director. And all this is doing is, is determining it down to two, it has nothing to do... Next Monday night, we'll be coming in, from five-thirty to six-thirty will be a work session for the board to ask these two candidates more questions, and then after six-thirty, we'll, we'll conduct our meeting and we'll appoint a director. We'll have a few more items on there than I thought we was going to have. We've got a couple of items that was tabled that we'll have to discuss. Does everyone fill them out and pass them up?
We have on this side, Your Honor.
Thank you. Again, this has been a lengthy little process, and I'd like to thank the board and, and Mr. Peters for carrying on while I had to take a little COVID break, and thank all of our central office personnel for feeding us and taking care of us out here each one of these, and all the public's been here to see this process, it's a learning experience. All right, Mr. Wright, are you ready?
I'm going to read out the vote totals, and she's going to double-check my math over here, make sure I've got them right, okay? All right, Ciara Koger, uh, Dr. Rebecca Farley, Kristy Hall. Gary Peters, Kristy Hall, Jason Tompkins. Nikki Voels, Rebecca Farley, Jason Tompkins. Melissa Branstadter, Rebecca Farley, Jason Tompkins. Darlene Brannan, Rebecca Farley, Jason Tompkins. Kathy Williams, Kristy Hall, Jason Tompkins. Bill Cody, Kristy Hall, Jason Tompkins. Karen Cooper, Rebecca Farley, Kristy Hall. Felicia Garrett, Rebecca Farley, Kristy Hall. Eddie Cook, Kristy Hall, Jason Tompkins. All right, our total votes here, I've got six for Rebecca Farley, seven for Kristy Hall, and seven for Jason Tompkins. So your top two vote getters are Kristy Hall and Jason Tompkins.
All right, thank y'all, I guess, uh, then next Monday night, we'll have, uh, Mr. Tompkins and, and Ms. Hall will be here for, from five-thirty to six-thirty for the board to ask questions, and, uh, is there anything else? Any other, well, we can't talk about any other business, this is a special call meeting, I'll entertain the motion with adjourned.
I'll second it.
And I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? We're adjourned. All righty, Will, if everyone's ready, we'll begin our work session, uh, the two, applicants for the director of schools, I guess some of the board has some questions for them, so Nikki, we'll start on your end, or you want to start, you want to be first? She wants to be first, so we're going to let her start at it. Well, yeah, we'll just pull one up at a time, and both of you'll answer the same question, if that's, if that's all right. That way we get an opinion from both of you.
Okay. I don't know who wants to go first, since choose whoever goes first for my question, we'll go second for this next one, okay? That way we'll make it as fair as possible, we'll just take turns. Um, I feel like we, we had three great candidates that were presented to us as a board to pick from, I think that every person has strengths and weaknesses. Um, I tried to look for what I felt were the gaps in those resumes, those applications. Um, Chrissy, you didn't actually work as a principal versus Jason's not actually worked K through eight, those are things that you have to overcome in this job. So my question for both of you is how do you plan to overcome that, and how do you plan, um, to build on those characteristics as a director of schools?
Can you hear me? Okay. So, one of the challenges that I know many of you are considering with me is that I have not been a principal of a school. However, for the last fourteen years, I have worked very closely with the principals and assistant principals, as well as oversee their work. And many times, I have had to consult and, uh, get valuable information from them, so I've been active in listening to them. I've also been involved with them with the evaluation process, so that I've co-observed teachers with them, had to be with the, the principal and assistant principal as we delivered, um, our, um, evaluation reports to the teachers, and talked to them about the areas of refinement and reinforcement. Uh, throughout the reading initiative, I was alongside with each principal and assistant principal as we visited classrooms and did Norman sessions on what was good practice for literacy. So I've had ample opportunity to work with them. On a different level, over the last fourteen years, we've also had complaints, uh, and concerns arise, uh, that whether they went through the proper channels or not, they ended up at the central office level. And so a lot of times in the central office, depending on who's there and who's available, we've had to answer those complaints or do the investigation. So I've been involved in a lot of those processes with principals and assistant principals, uh, and working with them.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tompkins?
Great question, I thought Christie did a good job answering too. So, K-eight, that's my weakness, well, that's true. I haven't worked in the K-eight outside of, uh, I've subbed in K-eight, but it all goes, it all goes back to, uh, what is quality instruction? And it's not a brag, I've done hundreds of evaluations, post, uh, pre-conferences, post-conferences, next-step conferences, uh, I've been doing evaluations for about, I don't know, fifteen years? And so, uh, what does quality instruction look like? And it goes all the way down to the kindergarten level. What's your standard? What you target? What's your assessment? What's your strategy? How are you going to know that they've got it? What are you going to do if they don't have it? What are you going to do if they do have it? And that works from kindergarten to twelfth grade. And so, uh, as far as being a principal, yes, I have. Federal program director, yes, I have. Uh, instructional director, yes, I have. Um, a little nervous right now, seems like. Want to smile a minute. But, um, I think at the, uh, at the K-eighth level, I would absolutely have to depend on principals to help guide me, what they see, especially K-three, K-four. I think fifth grade to eighth grade, I'm pretty strong. I believe that would follow with what I have done. And so, uh, on my, on the director's side of it, you know, being able to do quality evaluations, I think is very important, but I think more importantly, it's being able to work with your principals. Make sure they're overseeing quality evaluations, but most of all, quality instruction, because that's where you got to drive it to, every kid.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Be sure y'all get that mic close to you, or he'll be up here with stick. All righty, Nikki, you want, got any questions?
Sure, okay. So, in the past, teachers have been afraid of speaking up or speaking out for fear of retaliation for disagreeing. Several have left our community for other school districts. What is your response about their fears if they choose to leave our community to teach elsewhere? How would you alleviate their fears, reassure them that their opinions are valued to keep them from leaving? Do you have plans on bringing any that have already left back here?
Now, that's a question.
Yeah, well, so I'm going to try to break that down. Fears? Uh, if you're afraid of opinions, you better not be in this job. So, uh, you know, as, at York, dean of student, well, as a teacher, then dean of students, principal, uh, federal programs, not a whole lot of federal programs, not a lot of people, you know, put a lot of input in that, but if you're not willing to take on the opinions, uh, then you're on the defense all the time, and your opinions may give you the very nugget that you're looking for. So, you know, we do things pretty, pretty openly, uh, especially, I'll just be honest, I've had it modeled very well in front of me. We have action teams, we have supervisor teams, uh, we've actually created parent, student advisories, uh, community advisories, and, um, staffledy advisories, and so we get as much opinion as we can, because when you flesh things out really well, then when it goes out, you don't have to worry about it a whole lot. It's all pretty well taken care of before you ever get started. So, with your intel, which is your opinions, you know, you set your agendas, you, you, you give them their topic, you give them ways that you think that you might be able to work it through, and you let them start pushing into it. And what you want them to do is push back on you, because that's how you make a good decision. You cut your holes out, you know, before you ever roll it out, and then once you do that, and you start rolling things out, you've got a pretty good plan in place already. Matter of fact, you rarely will have any problems. Um, so fears, I'm, I don't know. I don't know how to tell people not to fear, but I'm pretty open, I'm pretty transparent, uh, I'm pretty easy to be accessible to. I've, uh, not always been that way, you know, defensive, I guess, when you're younger. Now you see the value of being able to pull that in, and so that's a, that, hopefully, I would like to see, personally, if I get the director's job, I'd like to see those action teams go into the schools. I'd like to get that information coming up out of the schools, back into the central office. And so from that, you know, maybe that will reduce fears, give people a voice. You know, if, if you're able to voice how you feel, and you don't feel like it's going to come back and, you know, cut your legs out from under you, you're more apt to voice, and that's how you get better. Okay, as far as bringing people back, I can't go into other systems, you know, and drag them back, but I would sure like to have some of them back. And so, uh, being open to it, uh, I don't really want people to recruit out of Fenchurch County, but, uh, I, I would absolutely extend a warm welcome to some of those to come back and apply, but that goes back to the application process. You know, when you open things up for, for applications, you get the best candidates, you know, and you use a team to figure out who those are. And I've said this before, I would like to see our principals being in charge of hiring their people in their classrooms and in their schools, because that puts them putting the value on the people that they're hiring, and they want to see that person succeed, and I think that's where that starts.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Ms. Christie?
Ms. Nikki, would you repeat your question?
So, in the past, teachers have been afraid of speaking up or speaking out for fear of retaliation. Several have left our county for other districts. What is your response about their fears, and if they chose to leave our community to teach elsewhere? How would you alleviate their fears, reassure them that their opinions are valued to keep them from leaving? Do you have plans on bringing anyone that's left back to our county?
Uh, Ms. Nikki, I appreciate that question. Uh, that's an outstanding question, and I think that that starts with relationships. Uh, we really need to build relationships with our teachers. Hopefully, I've established some relationships with the teachers that we currently have, and I think you do that by listening to them and valuing their input, because a lot of times, we are the ones making the decisions that directly impact what's happening in their classrooms. Um, you know, even higher up than that, we have, uh, the State Department that makes decisions that directly impacts teachers' classrooms, and yet we relatively, uh, or very rarely seek their input on stuff. So I want to build relationships with them. I want to listen to them, I want to hear what they have, because a lot of times, their perspective is outstanding, and it's stuff that, as a leader, that you always don't know. back and really, really got us. So, we have to build relationships with our teachers. We have to listen to them. And I hope that they always see me as someone willing to learn, because I think we also have to learn alongside of them, because there's so much change and so much new coming out. Onto the teachers that we've lost. I said this earlier in my interviews, we have lost some outstanding teachers to other counties, and those teachers have been allowed to excel and to grow professionally. And so, absolutely, I would love to see some of those teachers return to our system and to be at home, because we're very proud of the people that live here and raised here. And with the current teacher shortages, we truly need them here. So I am open to trying to pull them back, but I think we also, going back to what I said earlier in my interviews, we have to have a kind of PR campaign. You know, think about right now, think about one word in your mind that describes our school system. I don't know what word you chose, but maybe some of you thought "rule," or maybe some of you thought "close knit," which is kind of two words, or maybe some of you thought "family." I know when we think of Pine Haven Elementary School, that's a word that comes to my mind is "family." And so, I think we have to have a PR campaign that says, "We are a family. Family takes care of each other," and to try to draw them back. Again, we'll have to look at some benefits, because some of them did leave for other reasons. So what do we have to offer them? And if you've been in our classrooms lately, you will see box lots, you will see every classroom equipped with Chromebooks. So we do have some good positive things to be able to attract teachers back to our system, and I would love to see that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Mr. Peters, got anything?
Yes.
Melissa?
This is for both of you. What is a specific ideal you have to bring back our graduated students into the county workforce, especially after they have finished their post-secondary education, either from college or VOTEC schools?
I think that depends on our job market. Obviously, a lot of our jobs in our county is specifically in tourism, that kind of stuff. We, again, the Board of Education is our biggest employer in the county. We used to have a hospital, and the medical field would probably be close second. So, I think we have to work with our Economic Development Board or our County Commission to see ways that we can recruit and get students to come back. A lot of times, we lose our best and brightest students to going outside, and we want them to come back. So I think you have to work with County Commission and others to try to see what jobs that we have available and how we can attract them back. I'd also, hang on a moment, I'd also like to see some internships. I know that not only our students, but our teachers could do some internships where they model in the job areas that they might later on have. And I think I talked to you about this earlier. There's two types, work-based learning, which I have checked on, which our district is not currently participating in, but is still allowed, and then, school-based enterprise where this kid doesn't actually leave the school. So we could explore those avenues to expose kids to the businesses and jobs in our county, and hopefully, that would attract some of them back.
That was my answer to the second part of the question. Specifically, in the classroom, how would you initiate them? This county is worthy of coming back, too.
So that would be through the work-based learning and the school-based enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Mr. Tompkins?
If you don't mind, would you repeat?
Basically, what is a specific ideal you have to bring graduated students back into Fintress County, into this workforce, after they have finished their post-secondary education, whether it be college, technical school, specifically in the classroom? You know, let them know they want to come back to work here when they're completed.
I almost interrupted you there. I didn't mean to do that. I won't say that this is my wheelhouse, but just in the last two years, where we've really worked into this STEM education, I've seen the benefit. So, what we've done, of course, we have work-based learning at York, we've done that for years. But with the STEM base, we've been connecting our teachers into our jobs. And so, it's externships of teachers. So they go into the community. Like, this summer, we paid, I don't know how many, seven or eight of our teachers. They went to PWP, they went to the city, and they went to Salisbury. And, you know, our teachers know their standards, but they don't necessarily know what's going on in the community. And so, they go and they spend the day, not, they go and spend the day learning. They learn how the workers work. They learn what the workers are working on, and they learn what's going on in that business and that organization. So now, you've got eight people that have become experts, to a degree, that they draw right back into their classrooms. And so, you can't forget that. Once you learn something, it's not forgotten. And so, now, I've got eight teachers that's sitting there, being able to connect to our students daily, to things that they've seen and heard and done in the community, in community jobs. And so, that's one way. I would really like to push that if I got the director's job. It's a beautiful thing. It really is. Another way that you do is you try to bring in people into your classrooms. And you can't take, you can't ask someone, or you can, but, you know, you get an expert in, and I say "experts," that's terminology we were using, but let's say you take Jimmy Johnson with the county executive. Well, it's hard to put him through five classes in a day, but with technology, you can put him in one class a day, and you can record it. And then, you can go right back through that, you know, clip out some of the stuff, make it appropriate for what you're wanting to hit on, and now, you've got an expert in your county, right there in front of you, that they know and recognize. And I've just used Jimmy because he's county executive. But you've got that in your classroom. And so, it's powerful. And so, you start making your connections to your kids while you've got them. And you could run that all the way down to the elementary system. And it's just being intentional. You know, it takes a little bit of time, takes some forethought, takes some planning, but it goes pretty quickly once you start using it. And so, that would be something I would love to see do, or see happen.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Ms. Darlene, you got a question?
I'm going to try to get through this without any emotion, because the Director of Schools is the leader of a family. And my child, my grandchild, is in the third, oh, my goodness, I have one that's three years old and one's in the second grade. And I want this to be a good family for my grandchildren. So tonight's special for me. Allowed, I'm going to do a safety security, and I want to tweak it a little bit, so that one answer doesn't play off the other. Mr. Tompkins, Tanya comes into your office with a call from the Sheriff's Department that we have a shooter on campus. Shots have been fired. What's your first response, sir?
In the school? The shooter's in the school?
Yes.
Oh, you do an immediate lockdown. You get on your intercom, and you don't beat around the bush. You say, "Hey, I've got a shooter," and you give out every information that you've got. If it's at school, "I've got a shooter in the science building." And I say, "Ladies and gentlemen, we've got a shooter in the science building. Immediately lockdown, get safe. Follow the protocol that we have taught and trained you on doing. Students, listen to your teachers." And then, you immediately send people in as quickly as you get on your sheriff's department, whoever's popping up, you're sending them to where they're going. And, of course, with us, we've trained our teachers what that protocol is, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to voice that.
That's fine. I just needed your first response.
That's your response, right there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Ms. Hall? Tanya comes into your office with a call from the Sheriff's Department that there has been a bus accident at Forway. A bus hasn't made it back to school to unload all the students, but they have, excuse me? Okay, and before I started this questioning, I said it would be on security and safety with a slight tweak, so they get play off each other.
It's fine, let's go on with the question.
Thank you. My question is the same to you. What is your first response? The bus has been hit, and there are injuries.
My first response would be to follow our emergency plan that we have in place. Besides that, I would want to be in contact with the Sheriff's Department and those first responders. I think it would also be important, after we review that plan, to make sure that board members are notified as well. I know today, we had a situation, and we had a lot of people calling our office, one way or the other, about a situation. And so, as the Director of Schools, I report to you. So I think you would also need to be aware of the situation, because I'm sure you would have constituents in your area trying to get a hold of people. But we follow our school plan, our district plan, emergency plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Christie. Now, to make it only fair, Mr. Tompkins, would you answer that question, and then you come back and answer the first one?
Okay, so, let's see if I recall. So you got a bus accident at Forway and...
At Forway, it's been hit, and it's loaded with students, and all you know is that there are injuries.
Well, you're going to have to get some eyes on the ground, so you're going to have to be in contact with your police department. This is a little bit new, so I'm going to have to learn what board policy is on what emergency response is, which is what, you know, good answer on Christie's part there, you follow your board policy. And once you learn, see, I know my York policy on a school shooter, inside and out, but I don't know the board policy yet. So before I answer, I'd have to know what that says. So that would be my answer there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Ms. Christie?
Ms. Darlene, my answer would be similar for the shooter. Again, we have to follow our emergency plan that we have in place, that our Safe Schools Director has trained our employees and personnel, and it actually is probably not a good idea that we don't go back and do some additional training each and every year.
Yes. Thank you, both.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Ms. Kathy, you got a question?
Yes. Presently, our students have to travel 30 to 50 miles to get further education and training, whether it be college or vocational. And we have, the board, the director, and other educators have talked about building a building at Clark Range High School. We have talked with Scott County Vocational about instructors, and we're hoping to build a building, or we've discussed building a building at Clark Range High School for additional vocational classes. Do you support this idea of providing additional training in our county for our students?
Absolutely.
And adults?
Absolutely. I think we need to offer opportunities for our students in the job fields that they're going to need when they get out, but also the job fields that's available in our system. So I think we might need to look at some of the classes and maybe add to some of the offerings that's currently planned for that building. But we do have our S3 budget approved, that you all vote on tonight, that has funding for that. I've also been in contact with Jimmy Johnson. I do know that Ken Jaeger has also asked the governor to provide some additional funds for a building that is, I think, across from Faith Christian, for Rome State, for a permanent place for that, as well as possibly TCAT. But that obviously shows a need in our county for that type of classes.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Mr. Tompkins?
Would you mind repeating that question?
Okay. Presently, our students have to travel 30 to 50 miles to get further education or training, whether it be college or vocational. The board, the director, and educators in this county, we've discussed building a building at Clark Range High School to further vocational classes. We have talked with Oneida Vocational School. And would you support us continuing to work to get this building project at Clark Range High School to offer additional courses for students and adults for additional vocational training?
Absolutely. And here's why. Every opportunity that we can provide our kids in Fintress County, we need to be pushing for. That's not just with vocational classes. That's Rome State, that's AP. The state's pushing an AP for all right now. We've got 12 students that's actually taking AP classes for the first time ever at York Institute this coming spring. They will be doing it on their own. This fall, we will have AP classes in our school. AP obviously means you can take the class, you know, in time, pass the test, get college credit for. I've worked with Dwight Murphy with the Oneida Huntsville TCAT pretty extensively over the years. We have welding, construction, CMAs, EMTs, automotive right now with the Huntsville Vocational at York, and I would love to see more of that go into the Clark Range High School, but you've got to have space. Now, something we've not done, as well as we probably should have in the past, we've tried to separate the adults from the students, just in sense, but Mr. Murphy says that in Oneida, they've been doing it for 30 years, putting adults with students during the school day. You can start your class, you can back them up. You've got juniors and seniors, and you can put adults with them, you know, in the afternoons. Then you've got two bunches that you're now being able to pull from in order to get those numbers up for the money and the funding that comes with that. So, yes, I think we need to push as much as we possibly can into our county school system, Clark Range High School especially. As director, I would love to be able to work with that school some, for a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Mr. Bill, you got a question?
I'm good.
Ms. Karen?
I do. First, what I would like to know, I'm sorry. Mr. Tompkins, what's your understanding of the BEP and why is it significant to the county system?
The BEP is their major funding source for the county system. It's based on numbers. It's based on the students that are enrolled. And so, it's the number-one way that you fund your school, and that's, of course, one of the reasons that nearly every year, you have to kind of wait till you get enrollment numbers before you're able to determine if you need to hire extra teachers or maintain teachers. So your BEP is extremely important. My goal would be to increase our numbers as much as I possibly can. We need as many dollars rolling back into Fintress County as we can get.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Ms. Christie?
So, Ms. Karen, I would agree with Mr. Tompkins on that, but I would also add to that, on the BEP funding formula, the system receives 70% of the instructional component. And what a lot of people don't realize is that 70%, of that 70% of the instructional component, really 40% is made up locally by basically tax bases and stuff within our county. So the state has provided kind of a safety net there in this school systems that do not have a tax base and funding source, like some other systems, because of the discrepancy, that they'll fund them a little bit more to be able to keep them closer in what they can provide.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Also, that's where our other director is tonight. The BEP, the governor thinks he's going to put more money in our BEP for next year, so we may get a little raise. All right, next? Don't have anything? Anybody else?
I have one more question.
All right.
What can you tell me about Reading 360?
So, Reading 360 is the state's comprehensive plan to address literacy in the state of Tennessee. Part of that is parent newsletters, decodable books for students in early grades K through that parents can sign up for. Additional part of that is teacher training. This summer, every one of our K3 teachers, actually, K5 teachers, school administrators, instructional coaches participated in a two-week training, the first week being a full week online, and the second week being in-person. And after that training, the system received additional kits. Part of that literacy 360 training is also, later on, will affect teacher licensure, in that a teacher to renew their license will have to have a foundational skills literacy course, and this one will suffice for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Mr. Tompkins?
Well, that's a great question. I think Ms. Christie's probably the expert on that question, and I think you were instrumental in making it happen in the county. So, I really don't know a lot about the Reading 360. It'd be something I'd have to learn about, and if I got this job, it'd absolutely depend on Ms. Christie to teach and train me on that. But I do know it's a literacy program. I've seen the emails from the commissioner update, and I've looked over, but since it did not apply to me too much, I really haven't dug into it very well. But it was a good question, and one I'd need to know about.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Anyone got any other questions? All right, we'll do a little work session here, and then we'll be ready to get our meeting started. We have a plaque for Allard here for the recognition of Allard School being placed among the top 30% in the 2021 USA World Report rankings for elementary middle schools in the state of Tennessee. So, we'll do that when we first start our meeting. And, Ms. Christie, we had to call on you to do extra duty, but you want to discuss the Spark Grant and everything, explain those first two to us?
So, the first item that you're looking at tonight is the Spark Grant. That is with the CTE program. Ms. Karen Little couldn't be here tonight. I know you don't have a detailed budget, but you do have a budget set up. The Spark Grant has to be for equipment only. In addition, there is funds, though, that can supplement and be part of the TCAT instructors' pay or salary. So, in that is supplemental pay or part of the pay for the instructors. Additionally, desktop computers for teachers, for Ms. Christie Garrett's classroom. I know that we have Chromebooks for all students, but they're not good for running software[1791.54] I know that we have Chromebooks for all students, but they're not good for running software and apps. So we need desktop computers for her classes. Additionally, there are some training for the teachers in there and some certifications. So that's what I know about the Spark Grant. Again, I'm speaking for Ms. Karen, so I probably did not do a great job on that. Consolidated admin, we had a budget amendment to that. Basically, we were moving some additional funds from different salary line items to equipment. We were thinking of purchasing a poster maker for the system, like we did for each of the elementary schools out of S R funds. Just like tonight, we could have used that machine to make a big banner for Allard Elementary, that kind of stuff. So that's what that amendment is for. You also have basically consolidated funding application budget setups for Title I, II, IV, and V, and IDEA, and IDEA, I'll stop with that. Today, I had Ms. Jenny to do more of a narrative, because when you look at these budget setups, you see line items, and you probably don't know what those line items are. So I think before the meeting, she passed out to you a packet that has all of those line items with very detailed what is in those line items. So if you're looking at the 7100 series in Title I, you're gonna see instructional coaches and benefits in your 7100 series, 72130, parent liaison. So I think you'll like that a little better and being able to see what all those costs are for Title I, II, IV, V, and IDEA. And then the last one is the S R three budget. We did get the S R three budget approved. We have started spending. I will say y'all voted on the copiers, so we need to do the budget setup. The state has approved this budget, so the S R three budget is the final budget. And I think we also have a breakdown of it, of what narrative rather than line items.
Sorry we had to put you work. Thank you. I guess with all those considerations, all those can be as one motion, but we'll have to do the Spark Grant and the consideration for the S R funds. Those two need to be separated. Is there any other thing Ms. Darlene might discuss about the bus, the shop and everything? We wanted to hear a little about what you had to say.
I'm concerned, very concerned. Let me get this turned down here. I'm very concerned about our transportation department. It goes without saying, we don't have to worry about BEP if we don't get our children to school. And we depend on the buses. That's a very important department, as we all agree. But we are down to one employee over there. And I'll have to say Bobby Smith goes above and beyond. But he will be the first to tell you that he is not a certified mechanic. And even if he were, one man cannot possibly do all the work on those buses, a forty-plus fleet. Now, I know that we depend upon our Director of Schools to fill positions that need to be filled. He has a, Robert, what is your, I lose titles. What's your title, Robert? Transportation Director. And I don't know if one is depending on the other. I don't know what that situation is, but I know that Robert cannot run a bus garage with one employee. And so I don't know what the problem is, but it's a problem. And as much as I love what we're doing here tonight and what we've done the last four weeks, Mr. Jones will be with us until June 30th. Our children are on the road in the worst possible time of the year with one employee to keep those buses running.
Well, we'll have to take that up in January, because as a Board, they voted to let the new Director do the hiring because he's under contract until June 30th. So we voted last meeting for them to let the new Director do the hiring. Is that what you all understood?
I didn't understand that at all. We were told that Mr. Cooper is under contract, which when I got a, contract doesn't even come into this, and I'm not talking about removing Robert from his job. I'm talking about getting some people in there to make sure. My husband drives a bus. My granddaughter rides a bus. I want those buses safe. I don't understand why we're not hiring certified people that have apprentices that will make sure. Why are we down to one employee?
I can't answer that.
Well, somebody's got to. We're the Board. We have to answer it, because we're gonna answer for it when somebody goes over Wolf Mountain and they don't make it to the rock crusher.
Yes, ma'am.
And now's the time to do it. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else got any discussions on the?
No, I'd ask, Robert runs it. I'd ask him if he wants to comment on that, if he does or don't.
We're having problems getting employees. I mean, this year, we were having problems getting enough aids to ride the buses that we have to have aids on. But, I mean, we had a mechanic to leave us, and he went to the city for, I think, his five or six more dollars on there. I don't blame him. But, I mean, we've not been, we've had one or two since then, and they've left us, and they found more money and better benefits, and I don't blame them for that. But, I mean, we're looking for another mechanic. I'd love to have somebody that was, you know, highly certified.
Have we took up applications or?
We've not got any applications. I actually talked to Tanya about it the other day.
Have you advertised anywhere?
Well, not like we should. I mean, social media or so, but I want to talk to Mr. Jones, and hopefully we can run it in the newspaper and maybe on the radio.
Do you have to have approval in order to advertise for openings?
We do, yes.
Well, I'll add that to the agenda tonight, since it's not on there, and we'll see if we can't get some approval. But as far as your help, we've got a committee that's gonna start in January to try to get some, each one of our employees more money and try to get our pay raises up till we maybe can compete with some of these people. But a lot of people, you just can't get people to work.
You can't get them to work. I mean, we have, I deal with trying to get drivers, sub-drivers, and Darlene knows that. Feel without the same. I mean, it's a job. If Mr. Randy Clark back here didn't help me a lot, I don't know what we'd do.
And it's that way all over the state. It's not just here.
It is. It's not just here. I talk to people throughout the state that's got the same problems. I mean, you know, a lot of them's got two hundred buses, and they got thirty to forty people out every day. It's just hard to.
So if I'm understanding, we lost Scott Cooper, which Scott has even taught TCAT. He left our system for a matter of five or six dollars an hour?
Something like five or six, something like that. I believe that's what he told me. Of course, his benefits supposedly is better, too, so.
Is this something that the Board can take care of?
We can't take care of it. We can authorize him to ask for applications, but as far as the hiring and part, unless it's Director of Schools, all we can do is make policy and vote to spend money.
Well, we can spend, well, can we allocate money once they send the applications out?
Well, that, once the Director brings it back to us, we can go that route, yes, but we, our hands are tied. The state ties our hands with what we can and can't do. The Director of Schools is the man that does the job.
But, I mean, as of right now, our mainest department and transportation works together. I mean, if there's, I mean, the mainest boys, a lot of times of the morning, and most of the time, I'm on a bus somewhere. But their starting buses or whatever needs to be done, they're helping Bobby do that. And then vice versa throughout. But, I mean, we make it work until we can find some more employees.
All righty.
So, Robert, if we are, if we put this on the agenda tonight to approve for you to advertise for that, that is something we can get rolling right away to get some help over there. Is that correct?
We can try.
And this has been a problem for how long without even advertising?
Well, I mean, it's been a problem off and on. I mean, we've been able to fill the positions, but they don't stay very long, because
Well, yeah, part of it is blamed to this day and age, you know.
It is, it is.
You have, you can make fifteen dollars at McDonald's, and the EMT starts at ten.
Ten, that's right.
Yeah, so it's.
So, I mean, it's, and last year was a bad year. We had to have aid on everybody for hand sanitizer, take temperature, and so forth. This year, we don't have to have that, but, I mean, like I said, we're still having problems on any bus that's got three or more 3K, and then on our handicap buses. They must have an aid. And we've had a time this year, and I mean, just a few months into school.
Robert, I want to say this to you. I wouldn't know a transmission from the dipstick, but and to the two people sitting behind you, one of you will be our next Director. Please don't let a Board member have to be bringing this up. We're here to help you all run the school, and, Robert, that's your world over there. You know what's going on. Bring it to us. Please. Because I'm not happy waiting until January, but I guess if that's what we have to do, we have to do, but it's a bad situation.
All righty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But we can go ahead and.
I'll add this to our consent agenda, that we give him the authority to advertise for mechanics, so. Thank you. All righty, I guess we'll, y'all want to take a little break before we start our meeting?
I've got a question on the S R funds. On the last page where we've got building construction and building improvements, can you be more specific of exactly what construction and improvements we're discussing with those funds?
Give me just one minute. Are you, Ms. Melissa, are you looking at the narrative page that we gave you?
It's just the budget setup. Yeah, the S R 3.0 on the very last page of this packet.
Okay, do you have the packet that Ms. Jenny passed out before the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it looks like this.
It's probably the 76100, isn't it, what you're looking for?
Well, I'm looking at, it says, yeah, 76100, building improvements, and then 76100, building construction. Looking at one million.
Yes. So the 1.5 million is the CTE building construction of CHS. And then the additional funds are windows and door, building improvements for CHS, that's fourteen doors and fifty-six windows. And for York Elementary School, it's forty-three windows. And that's on the other page, if you find the one that's on one page.
Now, in this budget, anywhere does it show anything about the $350,000 grant that Mr. Peters?
No, that's not within S R. That's.
It's not listed on here.
So then I do have another question then concerning that building out there. I'm not for sure that we've ever got a complete total cost or a bid to know how much it's gonna cost us.
They're letting bids now.
So that's still in process?
Yeah, they had to go through the process. They had to get the people to sign off on the $350,000 grant to put it in there before they could bid it. But it is being bid right now.
That's been done. The grant's been done.
Yeah, I know the grant had.
Does the Board need to look over specs and things before it's actually bid to determine what we actually want bid out?
Yeah, I've heard three different buildings. We started out July before last with one building with three rooms. And then we went to one building with five rooms, and then two buildings with a total of six rooms.
I don't know the exact size of it, but we voted on it at Clark Range High School. Was it a six-room building, a five-room building? But whatever it is, the bids will come back, and then you get to look at everything they bid on, and if you choose to change that, you can.
Seems like they're going through a lot of trouble.
Well, the holdup was this grant money had to be, they had to be signed off some way through the state before he could bid the bids.
And usually, we have a picture that we're gonna get to look at to see what goes where before there is a final.
Yeah, I was at that meeting, and I seen the preliminary plans, but there was some question about, do we want this or do we want that? And nothing was ever completed or voted upon, so we're kinda still there. No, no, we did not.
All righty, before any money be spent, I guess we'll all get to look at it.
I just thought it'd make more sense if the Board actually sees the specs and determines what they want before we go through the process and pay an architect to bid, have something bid out that turns out to be a waste because we have to turn around and rebid it, and then it's costing the Board more money to bid something that turns out to be not what we want or envisioned for our county. If we're promoting CTE classes that are gonna bring jobs back to Fintress County, then we need to know what that building's gonna entail to bring that back, instead of just going by what somebody's decided in another county, in another business in another county to give them more money.
The second item on that, the doors and the windows, those were already, we tried to order them, and they didn't have them. So they're still supposed to be.
I just was wanting to make sure that that's specifically what I thought it was for. But the CET building, I'm thinking, we've not seen the specs, so why are we budgeting for something we don't even know yet how much it's gonna cost us? They changed it. They gave us different opportunities.
That's just in the S R three package, is the reason.
So that has to be voted on tonight. We can't postpone that?
We can postpone. We can table it.
We can vote on it, or then you can move funds around any way you want to.
Those funds can be moved, but they need to be set aside for that through S R three, so to make sure that they're not spent or they don't go somewhere else.
Well, the state will only give you so many things you can spend that S R three money for.
Spend it on.
Any other discussion before we get, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll start our meeting.
We need to cover, you want to talk about old business now, or we'll get into the old business during the business session?
All right, go ahead. No, we better do it now, because you can't talk about it because of the consent agenda.
Well, we tabled it. So Minister Crabtree, Dan Crabtree's memorial. And you got some good information on that that we need to back up maybe a little bit.
Yeah, I didn't have it put on the budget because of Dan's, that, you want to explain what it was I sent you from? From Mr. Peters, the one that actually done the work.
Yeah, so he might want to address that.
I don't have that in front of me, but in order to change that road out there that, Ms. Brand, that is in question, in Allard, is an Allard City Road, and there's about twelve or fourteen steps you've got to go through in order to change it. It's already named, but to rename it, to rename it, you've got to pay, I think it's seven hundred fifty dollars, and then you've got to make sure that the folks that's on the road, that owns the property on both sides of the roads, I think it takes two-thirds majority of those, and there's only two, so they'd have to agree upon it. And then it'd have to go before the Allard City Council for their approval. And then after they approved it, they'd come back to the Board, and they'd vote on it and to put it up, okay? That's pretty much it in a nutshell. But this, I sent Chairman a four-page report, I think, on that.
And I forwarded it to her, and I thought she finally decided.
You want me to read your letter? It's just.
I thought we might do it.
Go right ahead and read it. I don't have it in front of me, Ms. Brand. I'm sorry.
Eddie sent, or Chairman sent it to me December 1st to Gary Peters. In regards to our recent phone conversation involving the street off of Michigan Avenue, Highway 52 East, leading into Allard Elementary School, 911 shows that as a city street named Hugo's Lane, the property on the right side of the road, according to Tennessee Property Data Assessment, belongs to Stuart L. Gern, and the left side belongs to John G. Bell. And I've also attached the steps to have the name changed. But because it is family, I agree with Mr. Peters that that probably wouldn't be the best thing to do. But some of the members of the faculty at Allard, at this time, I think they would be happy with perhaps a monument. Help me out, sir. I don't know the name of it, but where several names could be put on it. Like a memorialization, thank you.
But even to do that, you're still gonna have to go through these landowners to get that approved.
No, no, this would sit there on the school property. There would be no changing names to hurt families' feelings or anything like that.
That's the biggest reason I didn't put it on the agenda. I know you decided that it'd be more better off to do that than it would be to go.
Well, we tabled it, so, you know, we're supposed to carry through.
All right. Anything else?
The only, there is one thing I'd like for everybody to know is this does not take away from these two people sitting on the front row, but this county, we are so blessed that out of the nine people that applied for this job, six of them came from Fintress County. And it would not be any small job to take on. I think this job would have to be a blessing, and you would have to be blessed, and I'm just gonna say it, you would have to consult God on a regular basis to do this job well for our students and faculty and staff. Now, having said that, I want you to know of the three people that applied that have not interviewed. And that was Stephen Lewis, Phil Brandon, and William Bilberry. And they were all willing to step out, and I'm sure that they will help these two in any way they can. But I wanted everybody in the county to know that we had six very well-qualified people.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Darlene. I agree a hundred percent. Anybody else got anything to say before we take a little break? Yep.
There was one item that was in the Director's report last month, just for transparency reasons. There was one item that was in the director's report last month, just for transparency reasons. So that you guys know as a community why that's being delayed until next month. There is a sick bank leave committee throughout our county, our county school system that consists of members from TEA as well as members that are appointed by the board for central office admin staff that make that sick bank committee. They're currently in need of us appointing two sick bank committee members through our central office staff. Ms. Sandy was not going to be here tonight in order to discuss that and kind of advise on who would be willing to step up from central office to do that and go over that. She is the head of that sick bank committee. She is in a meeting, could not be here tonight, so that will be delayed until our January meeting. But that was discussed in the last one, that there was one thing that needed to be brought up from November to December. So for transparency reasons, I felt like the community should know that's why that's been delayed, that's what's going on. But I don't think there's anything else we need to go over.
That's it, let's take a five-minute break. Alrighty, the meeting will come to order. If you call a roll?
Karen Cooper. Nikki Voels.
Here.
Darlene Brandon.
Present.
Sierra Coger.
Here.
Felicia Garrett. William Cody. Eddie Cook.
Here.
Melissa Branstadter.
Present.
Kathy Williams. Gary Peters.
Here.
Ten members present. Alright, in your packet there, you have the copies of the last two meetings of minutes, is there any corrections?
I'll make a motion that we pass.
I have a motion and a second that we pass the minutes as that are printed. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Motion carries. Alright, you have your director's report there, we don't need to take any action unless you see something that needs to be corrected. If not, we'll move on. Alright, we have consideration of the recognition of Allard Schools again, we have a plaque for them if you all want to-
I'll make a motion that we pass that.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
I have a motion and we have a second. There'll be no discussion about that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we have a plaque we want to hand out to them here at this time, and Ms. Felicia wants to read something from the, how they have come about getting this. Who we got from Allard here? This, they was recognized a little bit a month or so ago when we had a meeting, but we didn't have her plaques and stuff.
Okay, what this says is Allard Elementary School placed among the top 30% of the 2021 U.S. News and World Report rankings for elementary and middle schools in the state of Tennessee, making it both a U.S. News Best Elementary School and a Best Middle School. Schools are ranked on their performance on state-required tests, graduation, and how well they prepare their students for high school. Of the 80,000 U.S. public elementary and middle schools that were evaluated by U.S. News, barely 1,000 earned both rewards. Congratulations to the faculty, staff, and students of Allard Elementary for this distinguished recognition.
Thank you. Good job, we don't get enough out of boys as it is. Alrighty, our next item on the agenda is consideration for the Spark Grant, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I make a motion that we table this motion for further study. I didn't receive any of this until Friday afternoon, I'd like to go over it more, hear more about it. It's a little vague. I do thank Ms. Hall. Uh, I'm sorry, I have my mic on.
Now, you have this, are you not sure you're thinking of ESER 3 funds?
No.
Okay, alright, continue. Alright, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Would either one of you like to withdraw that for her to be able to table this?
Oh, no, I don't second on tables.
Okay. I have a motion that we table this, do I get a second?
I'll second it because I don't understand it yet, I got it late Friday afternoon and have not had a chance to overlook it.
Alrighty, I have a motion and a second that we table this motion for the Spark Grant point, or 3.0. Any more of the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed likewise? We have two to table the motion, so the motion fails. Now we'll go back to our present motion that we have a motion and a second that we approve the 3.0. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor-
Mr. Chairman, point of order. You ask for, point of order, please. You asked for all those that, and we said aye, which there was three of us, and you said likewise, and nobody said anything. So nobody opposed it, the three would have had it.
The three would have had it.
Yes, sir, nobody voiced their opinion.
Alright, let me back up here. We're going to vote on the table of the motion, we have a motion and a second, and no discussion. All those in favor of tabling that motion say aye.
Aye.
Alright, all those that don't want to table the motion likewise.
No.
I asked for a roll call vote.
Alrighty, we'll have a roll call vote. Voting to table the Spark 3.0?
Karen Cooper.
Table.
So you're voting no?
You're voting to table?
I'm voting to table that, I mean, not to table.
Then you're voting no.
Right.
We're voting on the motion to table, that's what we're voting on.
Okay, now.
Nikki Voels.
Yes.
Darlene Brandon.
Yes, please.
Sierra Coger.
No.
Felicia Garrett.
No.
William Cody.
No.
Eddie Cook.
No.
Melissa Branstadter.
Yes.
Kathy Williams.
No.
Gary Peters.
No.
Alright, seven, four, and three to table and seven against, motion fails. Now we'll go back to consideration of the original motion. I have a motion and a second on the Spark Grant, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise?
Likewise.
I have three-
Better roll call.
Any other roll call?
Hang on. Karen Cooper.
Pass it.
That's a yes?
I'm for it.
Okay. Nikki Voels.
No.
Darlene Brandon.
No, ma'am.
Sierra Coger.
Yes.
Felicia Garrett.
Yes.
William Cody.
Yes.
Eddie Cook.
Yes.
Melissa Branstadter.
No.
Kathy Williams.
Yes.
Gary Peters.
Yes.
Alright, the motion passes seven to three. Alright, the consideration of the budget amendment for, I guess that's where we're down to. For the admin, we can put the next, one, two, three, the next four motions, the next four budget amendments can all go in one motion if you all want to boot them together.
I will make that motion.
Alrighty, I have a motion that we put the next four budget setups in a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Motion carries. Now we're down to the budget setup for the ESER 3 funds.
I make a motion that that also be tabled. It's a very important budget, extremely important with a lot of money, and we did not receive these. Or the paperwork that explains things, I think we owe it more of our attention, so I'll make that motion to table, please.
Alright, I have a motion that we table the ESER 3 funds, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed likewise?
Aye.
Roll call them.
Roll call.
Roll call into table, okay? Karen Cooper.
It's not a table, it's, yeah, it is.
Yes, please, sir, thank you.
Karen Cooper.
No.
Nikki Voels.
No.
Darlene Brandon.
Yes, please.
Sierra Coger.
No.
Felicia Garrett.
No.
William Cody.
No.
Eddie Cook.
No.
Melissa Branstadter.
Yes.
Kathy Williams.
No.
Gary Peters.
No.
I'd like to clarify my vote. We had asked that the agenda be passed out by Wednesday afternoon so we'd have longer time to look at it. We have not had these delivered to us on a Wednesday afternoon in quite a few months.
Alrighty.
So I would like for us to go back to that what we voted on as a board to have them on Wednesday evening, so we do have a longer time to look at those.
Alrighty, I think also what we're going to do out of the first of the year, we're going to see that each board member has a Chromebook, so when they scan all this stuff in, you all will have it immediately when they have it, that's what we're hoping for. It'll be up to the board to pass it. Alrighty, what was it? What was the vote?
It was two, it was two that voted yes to table and eight that voted no to table.
Alright, motion carries.
So now we go back to the original motion of-
The motion failed.
Motion failed, I'm confused, your motion failed, sorry about that. Alrighty, the next thing we had on, we added to the agenda was to-
No, you've got to vote to pass it.
Now we-
I'm going to call another timeout here, but we can start over. Alright, the vote failed to table now. I'll entertain a motion that, for the budget setup for the ESER 3 funds.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
There's a little stress and anxiety going on tonight.
Lack of intelligence on my part.
As for discussion on this, we have to set this budget up, this is the way that I view this, we have to set this budget up according to how it was presented when it was entered into E-Plan. Then we may edit this budget.
Exactly.
But we cannot I'm just explaining my vote here, we cannot make adjustments to a budget that hasn't been set up. So that's why we, I second the motion to pass this budget. So then we may edit this budget at a future date.
Right.
If need be.
Yep.
This is just to approve that we have this budget for what we need it.
We have to have a budget to change it.
We voted to accept the ESER 3 funds months ago.
Yes.
Alright. Alrighty, now, now what are we going to do, vote on it?
Roll call vote.
Roll call this vote.
Roll call to pass the ESER, or approve the ESER 3.0. Karen Cooper.
Yes.
Nikki Voels.
Yes.
Darlene Brandon.
No.
Sierra Coger.
Yes.
Felicia Garrett.
Yes.
William Cody.
Yes.
Eddie Cook.
Yes.
Melissa Branstadter.
No.
Kathy Williams.
Yes.
Gary Peters.
Yes.
Alright, have I forgotten anything else before we get further down?
There's this little thing we were going to do super and ten that-
Well, that's later.
That's later.
Alrighty, we also got a, added this to the agenda was to give Mr. Robert the authority to advertise for bus mechanics, so that, I added that on our agenda too.
Alright, I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion?
Yeah, are we going to be advertising like newspaper and things like that more than just social media? So that way for people that don't have social media-
Yes, ma'am.
Will be able to see that and-
Papers, radio, whatever.
Are you good with that part, Darlene?
Any other discussion?
Can we also- Can we also reach out to like the local tech schools that are doing auto mechanics, like DECAT, and let them know if they got any upgrading graduates that we have job openings available to them?
Absolutely. Robert, can you do that? Thank you, sir.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, we allow Robert to do that, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Now you have a paper in your folder. You're asked at this time to vote for a director of your choice between Ms. Christie Hall and Mr. Jason Tompkins. If you'll vote on that and send it up, we'll get our secretary and them to to do these, and then we'll read it aloud, and while they're doing that, the board, and I would like to thank everybody, especially the community, for all this input. You've been here for four or five Monday nights in a row, and we appreciate that, and again, we thank our office help for feeding us all this time, so. They even cooked us a dinner today, and I forgot to tell the board to be here to eat it, so. But we sure appreciate everyone's input in this, so it shows everybody that we're interested in our community, and it just helps everybody to get along better when we, when we work together. And I'd also like to thank our three candidates, our applicants, as well as the ones that didn't make the final three, we appreciate you all too. Thank you for the, for seeing the need to come over here and help us. I think we need a new chairman, this one stays confused a lot.
He's getting old.
Yeah. COVID-19 runs.
He's had COVID three times. And got the vaccine and a booster.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, give him my social security number too.
I know where he lives if anybody wants to-
Yeah. Obviously, everybody knows what my phone number is.
True that.
As well of all the rest of you for the last week or two. Hey, it's been a pleasure, I had to miss two of the meetings on account of it, but there's been a lot of work, we need to thank the SBA, they helped set this up and guided us through it, and it's actually been pretty pleasant.
As a board member, I'll say thank you to everyone who did reach out to each of us, I know it, at times it's been overwhelming and you get three or four phone calls or text messages back to back, you can't always reply that text right away, or sometimes even at all at an email, but it doesn't mean that they aren't read or weren't considered. They were, every single one, or at least I know most of us did.
Any of the rest of you board want to say anything? Thank you, one or-
Just thank you both for being here and for having our community and our students at the top of your list.
Absolutely, you both have been very professional. Very nice.
We really couldn't lose with any of the, any of our candidates.
We've got two good candidates, and I do appreciate the people in the community, educators that have called me and voiced their opinion. And thank all of you.
Yeah, I'm likewise, I'd like to thank everybody that has participated in this over the last month, it's been three weeks that we met up here and talked to each one of the candidates, everybody did an outstanding job, and you know, I said something when I got on Board of Education, I said, I've got one agenda, and that is for the kids and the support staff that work for the school system. And it still stands that way today, and my decision based, tonight's based on the fact that, you know, of all the people that called me and and the teachers and so forth in the school system and the workers in the school system, so I took that all to heart, and we couldn't go wrong with any of the candidates that applied. I know there's several out there that didn't make the cut, but I'm sure they would have done a tremendous job too, so whoever gets you here tonight, I think we're going to be a winner either way, as the old song goes, so I appreciate everybody.
I'd like to say also thank you so much for everybody that reached out to me. There's nothing that people are more passionate about than their children. And one thing I can say is for this board, I think we're all passionate about this community and our kids, and the two candidates that are sitting here are definitely passionate about the kids in this community, whether they're from York or from the county, and I also based my decision tonight on lots of prayer, but listening to the voice of the community that's come in tonight, or this whole last few weeks, but I've made pros and cons for everything, and just know that it's, I've not taken this decision lightly, and I know that this is a step towards the future for not just our children that are in the school system now, but for the future.
Anyone else?
I've been-
I started to say, Darlene, you're speechless, I can't believe that.
Well, I've been sitting over here deciding, you know, I wore this so we'd be happy, but we, we had a person that was stopped at Walmart and told that they didn't make the shortlist. And they were stopped by a board member. And that has really bothered me because we need to lift up the six people that applied. And I don't know how they accessed the shortlist, but I want that person, they're in this audience tonight, and I want them to know that I truly am sorry that you found out that way at Walmart, that you were not going to be one of the people that we would get to listen to, but I admire that person greatly, and I do not that's all I want to say.
Our vote was taken here the other night in our, the two has to be read aloud so everybody knows where everybody stood. We've done the same thing tonight, so.
And that's the way it should be. I totally agree.
School boards can do nothing in secret.
They shouldn't.
But matter of fact, if two of us meets together and tries to do something, we're breaking the sunshine law, so.
That's right.
You know, we're open to the world. So with that, I'll let Mr. Evan read off what the tallies was and see if we have a new director or if we start voting again.
I'm going to read each individual board member's vote, how they voted. Felicia Garrett votes Christie Hall. Bill Cody votes Christie Hall. Karen Cooper votes Christie Hall. Darlene Brandon votes Jason Tompkins. Nikki Voels votes Jason Tompkins. Melissa Branstadter votes Jason Tompkins. Kathy Williams votes Christie Hall. Eddie Cook votes Christie Hall. Gary Peters votes Christie Hall. And Sierra Koger votes Christie Hall. The totals, Christie Hall, seven votes. Jason Tompkins, three votes.
Alrighty, I'll entertain a motion. We hire a new director.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
We can't do that.
We can't do what?
We can't have to.
We have to accept that as a motion, don't we?
We can accept that vote.
We can accept that vote.
But we can't hire.
Right. Well, when we accept that vote, they're hired, it's just left up to us when the contract starts. Alrighty, I'll entertain that motion that we accept the vote then. I have a motion and a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? All those in, well, I guess we're, we don't need to roll call it. All those in favor accepting this motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Motion carries. Now, is there any other business?
The next meeting, do we need to set that since that's the, January 3rd is the first day back to school? Do we need to make that January 10th for central office staff to have information to us?
Alrighty, January 10th, 5:30 at the old.
Go back here.
We don't need to be here. There won't be 10 people here. We're going back to the, we'll either go to the boardroom or, or we'll go to the, we've had enough of this, the long foot in jail up here.
I make a motion. We're not adjourned.
Alright, we have a date. I have a motion we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Also, congratulations, Ms. Christie, and thank you, Mr. Tompkins, for your effort there. I appreciate you.
I guess.